All right. Thanks, Brian. And thank you, everyone, for attending this August 23, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We are going to start tonight. I believe the mayor has something that he would like to start with.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. So last week in the public safety meeting or committee meeting, we discussed the Use of Force Policy Task Force that we went through, and I just wanted to recognize the members. I let them know last week that we would be doing this. I think they all found out how big of a crowd we were going to have tonight, so I don't know whether anybody showed up. But I know there was at least one person that was going to be on Zoom, but I wanted to give their names and just really thank them so much for all the time and commitment they put into this. There were several nights that we were up here for an hour and a half to two hours going over this. And as you guys saw in the Public Safety Committee last week, you accepted the report, and that has now become part of the policy. So they did a lot of work leading up to it. And of course, it's on the consent agenda tonight because of the acceptance. But I just wanted to, and if somebody is in the back, and I apologize, I can't see you, but if you are in the building, if you would stand up, and if you were on Zoom, at least wave your hands or say hello. Mrs. Lee Lovett, Ms. Levana Wormley, Mr. Jeff Walker, who I thought was on Zoom, may or not be, Mr. John Mark McGaha, Mr. Mike Higginbotham, Mr. George Terry, Mr. Mario Neves, and Mr. Mark Quimby. So again, I just wanted to thank them very much for their tireless work, and that's it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to members of that committee for diligent work and the results that are brought about. All right. So with that, I will call this meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation, I believe, from Pastor Tracy Hips. Pastor Hips, if everyone will please stand, and then we're going to have a special pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for this large crowd tonight, and I thank you for these men and women before me. God, that they've been elected by the people sitting in this room and by this community, but they've also been selected by you to be in this place, to bring peace, to bring equity, to bring love, safety, and a community together. Lord, I pray that as they work tonight, as they speak, as they have interaction, God, I pray for peace in this room. I pray for peace in the hearts of the people here, and God, may we be guided by you and glorify you in everything we do with Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hips. And so for tonight, for the pledge, we have, I believe, somewhere back there, Boy Scout Troop 95. If y'all want to come up. So this is Boy Scout Troop 95 from Shades Valley Lutheran Church. If y'all will, come on up. And the flag's behind you, so. But if y'all will, please lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Salter, if you will, please power roll.
Counselor Waltney.
Here.
Counselor Gier.
Here.
Counselor Alamon.
Here.
Counselor Wolverton.
Here.
Counselor Sims.
Here.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Nelms.
Here.
Counselor Andrus.
Here.
Counselor Harden.
Here.
And President Wyatt.
Here.
Everybody see, you got it for him.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes from our regular council meeting of August 9, 2021. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of such minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus.
That was Nelms.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is 11 to 0. All right, next we have board vacancies. I'm going to do my best to explain this. Okay, so what we're dealing with here is the Environmental Commission. We have a Ward 3 spot that is open as a result of our new city arborist. And so we have an existing at-large applicant who has applied for the Ward 3 position. That's Scott Rezick. He's the only person, Ms. Salter, am I correct, that has applied for that position?
Yes, sir. I was looking to see when we had that until.
I think it's tonight.
Yeah, I was the only one.
I think it closed at 4:30 today.
He's actually willing to step off of the at-large.
To fill the Ward 3 spot.
Yes, sir.
So he will fill the Ward 3 spot and finish out that term, which will go until May of 2023. That leaves one at-large position that he was holding, as well as a second at-large position that Michael Churchman was holding and has since had to step off. Mr. Wolverton, I believe we have two at-large applicants. Is that correct?
We have two that we were going to plan on appointing.
Right, we've only got two, right?
We did the interviews.
You did the interviews, sorry. Okay.
Yep.
So you've got two that you're ready to make a nomination. Let's first, and there is a slight difference here because one will be a four-year term from tonight, and one will be a four-year term from January of this year. So let's take the January of this year, Mr. Rezick's position first. Who is the nomination for that?
He's got to finish that for term.
So there's just a few months difference, but.
Right. We're going to do, I believe, Mr., this is for the term that will be just a couple months shorter.
Yeah.
Mr. Wes Mitchell.
All right. Do we have a second for Mr. Mitchell? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess I didn't formally do Mr. Rezick, even though he was the only applicant, so let me do that one real quick.
Sure.
I'm assuming you're making a nomination.
For Ward 3, yes.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that one's also 11 to 0. And then the last position, the one that was vacated by Mr. Churchman. Who's the nominee?
Wes Mitchell.
Oh, for Churchman, sorry. For Churchman.
Ms. Kristen Trobridge.
Trobridge. Great. All right, so we have a motion for Kristen Trobridge. Should we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and that is 11 to 0. Ms. Salter, if you will congratulate those three. We certainly appreciate their service, and that will get us a full slate on the HEC. And thank y'all for doing those interviews. I apologize, I was out of town that week. All right. There are no additions to the agenda tonight, so I would entertain a motion and approval, motion and a second for approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Waltney, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's also 11 to 0. That brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and second for approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0. All right. That brings us to the old business agenda and the first item, 130721, public hearing except for tonight for consideration to adopt new zoning districts for the Homewood Downtown District, amending the city's zoning ordinance to add Article 8 entitled Downtown District to appendix A zoning of Homewood's code of ordinances. The planning commission had voted 5 to 3 to 1 for a favorable recommendation of this ordinance. All right, and I know we have a number of people both here present and online, but we will start with a report from PND, Ms. Andrus.
Yes, the committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation, pending the public hearing after hearing from Lindsay Puckett, Senior Planner with the Regional Planning Commission, and Susan Henderson with Placemakers, as well as the following residents: Beverly LeBeuf, Wesley Templeton, Sydney Simmons, Ken Shea, Stephanie Oliver, Kristen Meadows, that's Meader, that's Meader, Melanie. M-E-A-D-O-R. Carolyn Herr, Jenny Allen, Mary Ben Fitz, Ellis Brazil, Chris Lane, Rachel Stone. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Waltney.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so we're obviously going to have this public hearing tonight, and I know that there are a number of people that want to speak, so let me, but let me just start, well, let me start by opening the public hearing. But let me just sort of recap, if I can, for everybody a little bit. And this speech may sound familiar to some of you who've been around this for a little bit and who attended the most recent public forums. But I want to talk about, you know, where we are and sort of what we're trying to do here, all of us, both up here and down there. This plan was, this issue was brought up through master plan, through some concerns of the Building Engineering and Zoning Department, through some requests of people. It came through the Heart of Homewood Plan, and it came up through the Planning Commission once, came to us, went back to the Planning Commission. I'm going to get some of this wrong because it's been around so long, and then went back to the Planning Commission again, and then came back to us earlier this year. Through that time, there were a number of public input sessions. There were a number of countless conversations, emails, exchanges, conversations on telephones, meetings, small group meetings, meetings with residents, meetings with business owners, meetings with property owners. And then when it came back, we held three public forums where we continued to get feedback from the community and to address that in the document. And that's how we got to this document. It has been changed a number of times to address those things that have come up. And where we are is that we're, this document, hopefully, and we'll hear from everyone tonight as to their thoughts about it. But what the idea behind this document is, is that it will protect downtown Homewood. I think everyone recognizes how special downtown Homewood is and how important it is to our community in multiple ways. And protecting it should be of the utmost importance to us. I think we can also agree that development has and will continue to come to downtown Homewood because we're not the only ones who love Homewood. There are lots of people that love Homewood and want to live here, want to work here, want to have a business here. And so it will continue to come. The zoning, as it currently sits, and generally, at least at the public forums on this, there was general agreement on it. The zoning, as it currently sits, is concerning, if not dangerous. It allows a tremendous amount of latitude to developers, and so part of this is meant to restrict what can come to Homewood, to try to protect downtown Homewood. So that's where it came from. We have, I think that everyone agrees about protecting 18th Street and 29th. And because of that, we've put in, we've made it clearer in this draft of the document with historic overlay. I think that everyone agrees that there are areas of downtown Homewood where redevelopment would be a good thing. And I think we've created a document that hopefully allows for that redevelopment in those places where it would be a good thing. I know there are concerns about residential, and we've addressed that as well in this latest draft with a review process that would be a public process before the city and before the BZA. And there were concerns about hotels, and we've put in a restriction of the rooms for hotels as well, so that there can't be another big hotel in downtown. So we'll go through this in a little more detail. I'm going to let our consultants go through it because they're going to be able to describe it better than I can. And then, once they're done with their presentation, then we'll talk about how we're going to, the sort of logistics of doing the public comment session. So with that, Susan and Lindsay, if y'all will, I'm not sure who's going first. Lindsay's going to go first.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having us again. My name is Lindsay Puckett, Principal Planner, not Senior Planner. You're fine. You're fine. At the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham. And Alex asked me tonight to talk about just the process of how we got here from all these years. So in December of 2016, the city of Homewood signed a contract with the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham. The scope of work in that contract was twofold. The first was to develop a downtown Homewood master plan and then to draft a new zoning code for the downtown area in order to implement recommendations from the master plan and to consolidate the 13 zoning districts and various signage districts. At its core, a master plan is a vision of what a community wants to become and a framework for accomplishing that vision by providing policy recommendations to guide growth and development. In the state of Alabama, a master plan is advisory in nature and does not have the force of law, hence it is not legally binding. But to establish a new set of zoning regulations for downtown Homewood, the master plan was needed to provide the legal basis for those regulations in order to adhere to Alabama Code of Law, Section 11-52-72, which states that zoning regulations must be made in accordance with a master plan. Next slide. In September 2017, the process for the development of the downtown master plan commenced, and I was the project manager on the project, working with my, overseeing my community planning team to develop the master plan. That public involvement process was interactive and involved both online and face-to-face public involvement methods. Over 1,800 people completed surveys, gave their input at the public open houses, and completed an online mapping activity. The master plan was adopted 13 months later, in October of 2018, by unanimous vote of the Planning Commission members at that time. Next slide. The public involvement process for the master plan helped to inform the development of a future vision for downtown Homewood. The vision in the document states that the people of Homewood envision a pedestrian-friendly downtown, which includes mixed-use development at a range of scales and that respects the surrounding residential neighborhoods and the 18th Street commercial core. The vision reinforces the existing retail core areas and public spaces by organizing new mixed-use development and street scape amenities around those areas. Comments were submitted such as stronger zoning regulations are needed to guide scale, general character, and site planning decisions. Next slide. The purpose of a future land use map is to serve as a long-range tool to guide future development decisions and become the foundation of zoning decisions. The Futuraline's map has seven land use categories, three of which are mixed-use categories, that are intended to respect the surrounding residential neighborhoods by stair-stepping or decreasing new mixed-use development density and intensity away from the downtown core. Next slide. Chapter 5 of the master plan also included recommendations regarding the current zoning code, suggesting the following changes to the code as it pertains here in downtown Homewood. So such things as allowing live-work units and replacing the existing 13 zoning designations in downtown Homewood with new mixed-use districts in order to provide for that range of densities and intensities that would align with the mixed-use categories shown on the Futuraline's map, to basically become the implementation tool for that future land use map and to create a new sign ordinance for the downtown area. Next slide. Knowing that the development of a new downtown zoning code would certainly undergo scrutiny, would involve the legal rights of property owners, and would need to be legally defensible so that the city of Homewood would not have a code that was considered arbitrary and capricious, I hired the nationally respected planning and zoning firm of Placemakers to be our subconsultant and to lead the code-writing process. Susan Henderson and her colleagues at Placemakers have written over 50 codes in North America. Next slide. The process to develop the downtown district code began 33 months ago in November of 2018. Two rounds of public meetings were held in April and June of 2019 to obtain public comments, which coincided with the release of the first two drafts of the code. Work sessions were held with business owners, property owners, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the design community, as well as listening sessions with the Planning Commission and City Council. The third draft of the code was published in early August of 2019, which was followed by public hearings at Planning Commission in November and City Council in December of 2019. Due to public input requests, the proposed code was revised again and sent back to the Planning Commission in February of 2020. At that public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to table the proposed code. 14 months later, in April of this year, the Planning Commission voted and recommended the code to the City Council for consideration. During the month of May, Placemakers led a series of three public listening sessions and made further edits to the proposed code in response to public input at those sessions. Now, after 33 months of public engagement and six drafts of the proposed code, we are here before the council once again at a public hearing to consider adoption of the refined code. Thank you for listening, and I'll hand over the presentation to Susan Henderson of Placemakers.
Thank you, Lindsay. So as President Wyatt just mentioned, the primary goal of this code, the mandate we were given by council when we first began meeting with you 33 months ago was to preserve and protect downtown. Everyone understands that downtown Homewood is unique, and it is something to be cherished. And so the very first step we took was to analyze your existing zoning. And that's when we began to understand the barriers to protection that you were struggling with. And so, next slide, please. The question came up about the sequence. You have legally in virtually every state in the United States, this process of policy or the vision is established in your comprehensive plan or your master plan. And then, independent of that, you have zoning, and they function entirely different because entitlements, property rights occur when the zoning occurs. The vision occurs when the master plan occurs. So the master plan informs the zoning, but then when you go back and you update zoning again, one of your due diligence efforts is to make sure that you aren't taking away property rights, especially in states like Alabama where property rights are so treasured and protected at your Supreme Court level. We had to very carefully look at your existing zoning map, which is in the middle, and make sure that the proposed zoning map wasn't downzoning people. And so through this process, there becomes this, there were properties that were allocated in the future land use map as vision that needed to be adjusted in zoning to reflect the existing entitlements. So that was how that process segued. And next slide, please. So I know I've shown this picture many times, and you're probably all getting tired of it, but the consequences of no action, as you stand today, if you keep exactly what you have in place, you have entitled in your high-rise district, I mean, let's face it, the first clue is it's called high-rise. So you've entitled in your high-rise C4B zoning district, what is called a, next slide, please, a floor area ratio of 2.0. So essentially, the square footage of the lot, you can double it in the total square footage of the building. So if you build up every inch of your parcel, you could have two stories. If you have some of that saved out for parking and landscaping, you can easily get to four stories if you build half the parcel. If you build a quarter, you get to eight stories. So in the majority of your C4B, which you see in that map on the right, without talking about all of the density bonuses that are also in there, just a simple development of the site, eight stories is by right. It's non-negotiable. The applicant can do that, and that's why you have the bank building. That is what it produced. And so the consequences of no action is, in fact, and I know a lot of people are saying, well, it's never happened, so it won't happen. Legally, it can happen. That's what you need to be aware of. The markets fluctuate. They ebb and they flow, and different market sectors are popular in different eras. And we have no crystal ball. We have no way of knowing what the next market, hot market, will be. And legally, today, you can build that much. So that is a consequence. The other consequence of no action, next slide, please, is that 18th Street can be converted to a strip center. And good things are permitted in your zoning right now for 18th Street. You can build to match. You can build at a zero lot line, but you can build 35 feet or three stories today with all of your parking in front, and that is the definition of a strip center. And then, instead of being Homewood, Alabama, and your beloved 18th Street, you become anywhere USA. You could be Muncie, Indiana. And as a result of all of the hard work that you all went through in your visioning document, the mandate we were given by council was to protect downtown, and that's how we got to where we are today. Next slide, please. This is what the current code, the proposed code before you tonight could, at its maximum, produce. And both of these images are courtesy of your local architect, Louis Niket. Next slide, please. So just to summarize what happened, I also want to mention, just for the sake of the community, that your council have been, has been more responsive to community input than I believe any council we've ever worked with. I have never gone through six rounds of edits. Three is usually about the max. And so the seriously substantial changes that have happened through this public process have been significant. We added parking requirements. They're not considered a best practice in downtowns in zoning anymore, and the community reacted very negatively to that, and so parking standards were added. We provided extensive protections for 18th and the first block of 29th with height reductions and the removal of residential. We reduced heights across the board. The first proposal was a six-story maximum to be closer to the current eight-story. Reducing the facade glass requirements, there was pushback on that because of the experience with the West Homewood code. And then changing the setbacks to more closely reflect the existing properties, especially on Crescent, Linden, and Reese, because those are, they happened over time, and so the setbacks are quite varied. And so we changed the code to reflect that. Next slide. And then this year, having to do with all of the listening sessions, it was brought out that people didn't see the protections of 18th and 21st. So all of those regulations that were already in the code, we essentially consolidated them into a single historic overlay within medium intensity, so that it's crystal clear exactly how we're protecting 18th. We restricted the lodging use because it was pointed out by one of your counselors that with your new hotel, you have enough bedrooms downtown to accommodate any potential near-term market demand. And so we restricted, we didn't change the permitted use. We restricted the amount of residential that could, of lodging that could be built in high intensity. And then finally, we did a serious restriction of the process for getting to residential uses. Because that became, that wasn't a large part of prior discussions, but that became a very large part of the public concern this year. And so as a result, we made residential uses restricted in high intensity. You can only do six units by right to match medium intensity. But then, once you get, if your proposal is over six units, you have to go through a public process of providing a development plan and then getting BZA approval after you, the applicant has evidence of no negative impacts to public services or traffic. So that's the summary of the response from this year. So next slide. So next slide. So just in conclusion, as Lindsay mentioned, thirty-three months of public review, six substantive edits directed by community concerns, and three public hearings. And that is what you're considering this evening. Thank you.
Thank you to Lindsay and Susan. Last week in committee, there was an additional concern raised about the properties that border Rosedale Drive, or some people call it two eighty, whichever way you want to call it, on the very northern end of downtown, and concern about how those were in the plan. So we've we've looked at that and and discussed it and talked about it with with our zoning consultants and looked at it from a legal standpoint. And I believe that we've talked about what we've talked about is removing those parcels from the plan so that they would stay their current zoning. Assuming someone would like to make a motion to amend the map to say that.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce the amended map.
Okay. Maybe we have a motion from Mr. Almon, second from Mr. Wolverton, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, that is eleven to zero. Brian, I don't know if you have a copy of that map. You do. Fantastic. So just so everyone understands what we're talking about, if you look at the top of that map, there is that light purple of medium intensity that borders on Twenty-seventh Avenue South. The properties between Twenty-seventh Avenue South and Rosedale Drive on that map have been removed. And so those would stay, I believe, with with a couple of exceptions for institutional, most of those properties are currently zoned C four A, which has a thirty-five-foot height requirement. So they would stay that at least for the time being. And then we could take those up if we needed to at some later point. So that's the map that we're considering at this point with this with the change that was made. So with that, we will get into the public comments. And let me just talk a little bit about that. First, I want to thank everyone who has given us input, phone calls, emails, attended meetings over the past thirty-three months. We've had a number of them. We've talked a lot. I've gotten to know many of you very well. And we we appreciate all of those comments, just in general, but also because it's brought us to the plan that we have tonight. So I appreciate all of that and thank you to all of you who have done that. Thank you to everyone who, just in the past week or so, has has sent us emails. We've certainly gotten emails of people that are in favor of it. We've gotten of what we have, we've gotten people that think it is too restrictive. We've got people that think it's not restrictive enough. We've gotten emails about everything. And and that reflects the comments that we've gotten and the discussions that we've had over the past three years, or just short of three years. So and lastly, thank you to all of you who are in attendance tonight and all of you who are on Zoom. We certainly welcome your comments tonight and want to hear from you. So, couple of ground rules and procedures about how we're going to do this. Same thing happened at the public forums and it worked very well. I, we are all going to be respectful of each other. We're going to speak about each other respectfully. We're, we can have differences of opinion and that that's, that's fine. That's good. That's part of what this process is. But we will treat each other respectfully. That means when we're addressing people or addressing people's, what people think, we will do so respectfully. It also means that there will not be a reaction to items that are said here. And Mr. Lane, do you have a problem with that? You're laughing at me. I'm asking if you're having a problem. Thank you. I appreciate your support. So we will not have a reaction. That means no good reactions, no bad reactions, no applause, no cheers, no jeers. We want everyone to feel comfortable to come up here and speak, or to be on Zoom and speak. And we will allow everyone to do that that wants to do that. But we will do so respectfully. We will treat each other like the neighbors that we are. All right. Also, we have obviously have a bunch of people here. We have, I think, even more on Zoom from the look of it. We want to be respectful of everyone's time, both on this item and on the rest of the agenda. So I would ask that everyone only speak once, so that we can get everyone in. We will also have a time limit of two minutes. I will let everyone know when their time is running up. I'll try not to interrupt you, but I would, but at the same time, I want to let you know. But and lastly, well, maybe not lastly, second to last, for those of you in person, there's a sign up sheet on this little table in front of the city clerk, if you will, before you get up to the podium, if you will sign your name there, well, not sign your name, if you will print your name legibly so that we can keep track of that and it's easier to put in the record if everyone will just print. But if you'll do that before you get up to the podium, that that will help expedite this process. Lastly, we will start with the room and the people in attendance, and then we'll move on to Zoom. So with that, anyone that would like to speak for or against this item, please feel free to come up, print your name on the sign up sheet and come step to the podium. And if we don't have anybody. Suspected that one.
I'm Bernice Hawkins. I've been up here before. I'm very passionate against this proposal as a Homewood citizen. I think y'all are trying to change the downtown. I think there's another agenda behind it. And that's just my personal belief based upon other things. I noticed y'all did change some of the high intensity that I was going to complain about, but I still feel Rosedale's being encroached upon. It's felt that it's the goal of Homewood to get rid of Rosedale over a period of time. I've heard that from Rosedale citizens. So I did have something typed out so I wouldn't be so long-winded. But I had to throw that out the window because I left it at home. But I love Homewood. I appreciate how hard everybody is trying to work for this. But it concerns me, thirty-three months, the citizens, the majority of us, don't want this. I mean, why can't y'all see that? We keep going back to placemakers and she keeps coming over and over again with a different plan. And we don't, majority of the citizens, I know there's a lot of them that do want this, but the majority of the citizens and the property owners do not want this. I asked the city council to please look at this, forget about hidden agendas, everything else. Y'all are here for the citizens. And and please respect what it appears the citizens want and not respect what the developers want, who is going to give money by taxes and everything else. But anyway, I'm done. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. We're, we're not going to have reactions. I'm not, I'm not talking about you, Ms. Hawkins. You did fine. Please, no reactions. So if anyone wants to come up and sort of get ready for the next spot, they're welcome to. If not, you don't have to. But if you'd like to.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
I'm Reverend Edward Steele. I'm the pastor of Union Missionary Baptist Church, the oldest church in the city of Homewood and Rosedale. I'm against it. Rosedale is planning on staying there another hundred and thirty-four years. There's no need to infringe, you've already infringed on us already because we haven't, when we have funerals or something, we have, we can't walk across anymore because of the developing that's going on. So I'm asking you all to listen to your people that voted you in office. Listen to them. Homewood is a great city. Rosedale is historic. It's historic. Bethel, I can't speak about it. Hundred and thirty-three years. Union, a hundred and thirty-four years. In the same spot on the same corner for a hundred and thirty-four years. And I feel like you all are trying to push Rosedale out of the way. I don't live in Rosedale. I don't live in Homewood. But I got the money to buy in Rosedale. I got the money to live in Rosedale. And if it would, if that's what I need to do in order to keep Rosedale where it's at, I will do it. Because we need Rosedale to remain institutionally zoned. L one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I'm Mary Edwards. I live here in Rosedale. Real, born and raised right here in Rosedale. I am a member of Friendship Baptist Church, right up from Union Baptist Church. Friendship Baptist Church is a historic church, one of the main churches, Bethel, Union, Friendship. Why would anybody, if it's you all, if it's not you all, or anybody, want to put buildings up in our neighborhood, where we was born and raised here, and hoping to die here? I know I do. Would you want buildings in your neighborhood, in front of your church? I don't think you would. And God is not pleased with it. Sit her. Think about it. If you live here in Rosedale, and been living in Rosedale as long as I have, I am eighty-eight years of age, and hoping I get ninety-nine years of age or more. Where would I go? Oh, yes, the plenty of places I could go. But the main point is, I don't want to go. Would you want to go? No. I love my home. I love my neighbors. Everybody in Rosedale, not only neighbors, we are families together. You come in Rosedale, if you're looking for Mary Edwards, my nickname is baby. Oh, you had to say, I'm Miss Baby Lee. That point where Miss Baby Lee. We are neighbors. Sometime at night, I might not, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. Sometime at night, I forget to lock my front door.
Miss Edwards, that's two minutes. If you could just wrap up for us.
Yeah, I tell you one thing, don't try to come in though.
Yes, ma'am.
You all think about, think about us here in Rosedale. You already got enough business here. Don't let nobody just come in.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Think about yourself.
Thank you very much. Ms. Williams, I believe you're next. Please respect everybody. It's not asking a lot.
I don't know how I'm going to follow that, but.
We'll give it a shot.
Yeah. Forgive me, I'm going to read this because two minutes is not very long. Contrary to the pigeonhole, many of you on the council have put me in. I am not opposed to rezoning. I am, however, opposed to this rezoning plan, as it is currently written for the following reasons. It was written with far too much deference to developers and without hooks in it to incentivize developers to provide green infrastructure intended to assuage damage by stormwater runoff and help with sanitary sewer issues. After the devastating tornado in twenty-eleven in Tuscaloosa, they put incentives in place that to date have implemented over three hundred green projects. If Tuscaloosa can do it, so can Homewood. The use on appeal section of the HI zone that was recently added is without objective criteria that President Wyatt stated would be required to stand up to legal scrutiny. Without that, developers would easily be able to justify more than six residential units on a piece of property. In addition, that section puts the responsibility for deciding appeals in the hands of the BZA. This is clearly an abdication of responsibility by the council. This is a way for you to say that your hands are tied, just like you did with the pink cap, hey, excuse me. The continued lack of protection for Rosedale is very troubling. The city has taken advantage of this historic community for decades. It's time to stop giving lip service to the value of that community and its residents and actually protect it with proper zoning. The ordinance completely ignores the vast majority of what the citizens asked for in the heart of Homewood Plan, which was supposedly the foundation for this ordinance. Residents vastly preferred one to two stories with traditional Eighteenth Street style. Instead, you brought in a consultant who does not know Homewood, who beat a dead horse about the risk of eight to eleven-story buildings downtown. Since Regions was built in the eighties, no one has built an eleven-story building. This was a red hearing. Lastly, you claim that the revised ordinance preserves and protects downtown Homewood. So you added a historic overlay on Eighteenth and Twenty-Ninth, but you failed to include a design review board like the Stadia, Mountain Brook, Fairhope, Alabama, and Franklin, Tennessee, and thousands of other cities across our country. This plan needs more work to keep from opening the door to developers to ruin our downtown. If you don't take that time, the failure that happens will be on all of you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Well, I'm impressed because you hit it right on the nose, Ms. Williams. I appreciate it. I will note just one thing with regard to your comments. The the process of it going to the BZA is actually a state law. That's that's actually adopting a existing provision in state law. So next person that would like to speak. All y'all can come up.
Good evening. I'm Beverly LeBev. I want to reiterate what I said to Planning and Development Committee the other night about my fears that we to reviewing the only parcels up with have more than six dwelling units in them, will give the developers the opportunity to just build one after the other, after the other, and there'll be no review other than staff, the easy staff doing it. And I don't think that's what the citizens want. They want more review than that. And I think that it's unfair to make them think that there is some sort of larger review going on when there really is not. And this could, you know, we could end up with a whole block or two blocks of six-unit dwelling buildings all the way down the street. I'm also confused about this business of the BZA versus the Planning Commission, because this weekend I found this document on the city website that says proposed downtown zoning. This is under the letterhead of the Regional Planning Commission, the city of Homewood and placemakers. You're all down here at the bottom. And it says, twenty-twenty-one edits after the May twenty-twenty-one public listening sessions, council has required the following edits, list several of them, then it says restricted residential use in H one for applications over six units as follows, requires the development plan, preliminary and final review by the Planning Commission, as according to Article Six of the Homewood zoning ordinance. And that's right on here and it's up there today. So I'm not sure how it went from this to the BZA and this never got changed. There's, it's very confusing. And I think that's something that needs to be taken care of and that the public needs to understand how that happened and why it's gone back and forth and back and forth. It's very unfair.
We're doing good on time. Susan or Lindsay, would you come up and just make sure that what I'm saying is correct? Or I guess I'll let you answer it. And then if I need to add my two cents, I will.
I was discussing this with with Mr. Kendrick. And he recommended that because you're, you have an existing development plan review in place that we were referencing. And he said instead, his recommendation is that instead of doing that, which is on the website at the moment, it would be much clearer and more expeditious to keep it all contained within its single document. And therefore, he was recommending that that I should defer to Mr. Kendrick and let him speak for himself.
The use of pill section in the state code and in our current zoning ordinance currently relates to two things, uses of appeal. Uses of appeal relating to home occupation and uses of appeal dealing with childcare. And those are the provisions that deal, permit uses on appeal. And they all go to the BZA. I think Susan was looking at that particular section of the zoning ordinance that deal with final development plans. And that does go to the planning commission. But uses on appeal go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment by state law and by our zoning ordinance. So there was a confusion on her part about that, in my opinion. And we've discussed that. All matters that deal with uses on appeal go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment under our current zoning.
And, and I'll just say that that has been my understanding the entire time and what I think all of us have discussed is that it would go to BZA. And I know that that's what the ordinance says, but yes, it goes to BZA because it's a zoning issue and because there's an existing procedure already in state law. Ms. Allen, I think you're next.
I'm Jenny Allen. I live on Overton and I own a property on Linden Avenue, and that's really why I'm here. And I want to thank everybody who has had a hand in this process. Change is inevitable and often hard. And I too was skeptical at first. I'm a longtime property owner on Linden. And in twenty-nineteen, several of the low-intensity owners got together. We took a proactive approach by booking appointments made available by the city and took advantage on one-on-one meetings with Susan Henderson and Lindsay Puckett to express our concerns. We were heard. Careful attention was given to our needs and amendments were made. This has not been a rushed procedure. Since twenty-nineteen, additional issues have been addressed and modified, leading to this final revision, which looks to the future while respecting the past. Nothing is a hundred percent perfect. But this is a thoughtful, workable, doable plan that strikes a balance between future growth and Homewood's history. It will move the community forward. I support placemakers, downtown district plan. Thank you all for your stamina and patience.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Come on up.
I'm Ben Weglaidner with Cabo River Society. And I'm not here tonight to speak either in favor or against the rezone. I just wanna be here to urge the council and the City of Homewood to consider the stormwater and sanitary sewer implications of a rezone. There's a lot of flooding and pollution issues in Shades Creek and its tributaries. And I just hope that the council and the City of Homewood is aware of those issues and is willing to look to address those issues. And on the sanitary sewer side, I think everyone in this room is aware that the sanitary sewers of Jefferson County are overloaded and have some issues, particularly in the City of Homewood. As early as this year, there was a sanitary sewer overflow into Shades Creek, totaling over a million gallons of raw sewage. So I just wanna make sure that the council is, is aware and, and willing to address those challenges with, with a rezone. And I appreciate your time.
And I appreciate you bringing that up. As a matter of fact, we're looking at it not just with regard to downtown, but in our entire system.
Fantastic.
As a, as a separate item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Linda Neighbors, and I sadly have not followed this extremely closely, but, and I will say that I needed the fourth grade version of the ordinance. I'm sure most of y'all did too, because most of it did not make a lot of sense to me other than kind of the gross overview. But I do also have concerns about the stormwater drainage. I have concerns about green space. Whether there is green space or is it just the potted plants that, you know, are interspersed along the walkway? I personally feel one of the biggest concerns that the Homewood residents have is, and, and I have it too, as far as looking at this. I, I appreciate the current ordinance and the possibility of somebody building a huge multi-story building and that they, there would be no way to get around that. But at the same time, I don't want to see in the high-intensity area a lot of five-story buildings. I mean, I look at this building and I look at Soho and that's enough for me. I look at Valley Hotel and it's what now six, basically six or seven stories because some of the lower ones are, are very high. So, you know, I think that's what people don't want to see. They don't want to see the bigger buildings and buildings really scrunch together. You know, they, they want it to be more of a neighborhood, so.
Let me answer at least one of your questions about green space. The current zoning has nothing in it about green space. This one, this ordinance does have some requirements in it dealing with making space for green space and things like that, streetscapes, planting trees, all of those sorts of things are included in this. In addition, there's, there's a whole bunch of that that, that's outside of zoning that we can, that we can and, and have and will continue to look at as well in terms of creating green space. But this is an improvement over what we have. Zoning and green space overlap a little bit, but there's a lot of it outside that we can look at as well. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I suppose I just know about the tree ordinance that is never enforced. And so I have a real concern that we're losing the woods of Homewood. And, and it's distressing.
I don't necessarily disagree with you and that, but as far as the zoning plan, this is an improvement upon what we have currently. Thank you very much.
May not be exactly where we need to go yet.
Thank you, Ms. Neighbors. Anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Name is Fitz.
Tom Fitz. I know this has been a long process that probably everyone wants to get over with one way or another. And the, I, I think there's a lot of good things, I think, that, that y'all have gotten to in this plan. But the, the biggest thing in my mind that sticks out that will drastically change the downtown area is the high intensity. It's, the way this is written, you could have a seventy-six-foot building, which could be lined up on any streets and you, and you don't limit that at all. And that would drastically change that whole area that's being rezoned to high intensity. In addition to that, you have very subjective language in here that gives developers a lot of leeway to do what they wanna do. And Alex, you said that our current zoning is dangerous because it does just that. And this does not change that. You have very little, you, you're not giving the city any criteria really to turn down the appeal to go above six units and a high intensity. And so you're just, you're opening the floodgates for large buildings. They're gonna cover that whole area. And in my mind, you'd be much better off leaving that particular high intensity as a C4. And I think everybody would take their chances that a eight-story building would be built. It's, the likelihood of that is next to nothing because it would have been done by now if somebody wanted to build an office building of eight stories. A lot of people wanna build six, twelve, you know, thirty-unit apartment buildings in downtown. But I don't think your residents want that.
Thank you, Ms. Fitz. Let me, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I have one, one other question, I guess, to your change of the map of taking the Roseville area out, which I don't necessarily disagree with. But why is that done? Why do you seem to kind of cherry pick that, that to come out before, right before this meeting?
Sure. So I'll address both things that you said. So, and I'll start with the second one first. With regard to those parcels, there was a concern simply that those parcels because of their proximity to Roseville and because of the limited number of parcels, because of their location and because of what they were zoned, that those could be taken out of the plan as opposed to other parcels, which it would not work with. And so those parcels will be looked at if the council feels compelled and, and the planning commission, that, that those can be looked at at a later point in time. With regard to, I wanted to, I wanted to talk a little bit about the criteria that you brought up with regard to the BZA. Cause I, I know that I've talked to a number of people about this and, and that there's been some concern about it and quite frankly, maybe even a little bit of confusion about it. So I wanna be clear. The, the review process by the BZA, the developer has to present information about the schools and the effect on the schools, which includes getting information from the schools about that. It has to address the effect of traffic by having a traffic study that designates exactly what the effect on traffic is. And it has to address what the parking is. If the BZA determines that, that it has a negative effect on any one of those three, doesn't have to be all three, it can be anyone, the BZA can and should deny the, the petition. Because what is on, the burden is on the developer to meet the burden of saying that there is no negative effect. Now, negative effect can be lots of things. And that, that's why the BZA has that broad control to deny it. And that means if there is one student that is coming out of a proposed apartment complex, that can be too much. One student can be enough. The BZA, that gives the BZA the ability to deny it. One parking, extra parking space gives the BZA the ability to not, to deny it. Any effect whatsoever on traffic gives the BZA the ability to deny it. And the process will include exactly what we're doing here tonight, where any development that shows up, anyone that wants to speak to it for or against, will have to, can come to a public hearing that the BZA has to hold about it, where the voices of the public can be heard and those items can be addressed. And people can say, one student is, is got one student or even the potential for one student. And that, that is what we see as a community is too much. And that can be it. Any effect can be too much. All right, anybody else? I, I'm sorry, I, I wanna make sure we give everyone the time. Mr. Shea? I, I promise I will, if there's a follow-up, I wanna give everyone time to address it. Mr. Shea, are you willing to give up your time? Come on, Tom. I'm, come, come to the microphone. The people on Zoom can't hear you.
If, if you're saying you could deny it because of one extra student is added, so if, if an appeal gets approved and they have extra students, even though maybe there's, you know, it's a, it could be a negative impact to the city and the next development gets denied and it has students, you know, living in the complex, how is a city not at risk for denying basically the same, same thing that somebody just was approved for?
Sure.
I mean, you, we, if you had, you know, specific items that whether it be, you know, additional parking or
Well, actually.
Susan can, can come up with that, but you, you don't have any specifics that are, that the city can rely on to hold development in check on that high-intensity area.
So the reason that, that in terms of legal, potential legal liability, because we have set out an objective, the, the list of criteria that have to be considered, that, that is actually what makes it more defensible and under the law as opposed to leaving it C4 and having each development come up without an, an objective set of criteria, where it would be accepted or denied without a list of criteria that they have to address and that they have the burden to reach. That's where you run into an arbitrary and capricious situation. By the BZA looking at it and they can, any negative effect, which is a broad standard, I agree with you. That's, and it's a broad standard because it gives them broad authority to deny it.
And then, and then be sued by the next time when.
Well, I, I can't. I, I, we, we can do that. The way you get sued more often is when you govern by variance and that's sort of the other option. So I don't think that, I think that that would create more legal liability than this. And I, I feel pretty confident about that. Anyone else wish to speak for or against this? Yes, ma'am. If you will just sign in over there, unless you've already done it, at that little table right there. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trish Cannon. I've been a resident of Homewood for, I'm close to twenty years. And, and I've been, like most people, kind of.
They're having trouble here. Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Sure, how's that? Hi, I'm, you're welcome. I'm Trish Cannon. I've been a resident of Homewood about twenty years now. So I have a question. So what is, why do you think the high density is more defensible legally than a medium density?
Sure. Are, are you talking about the, the five stories?
Yeah, especially, especially around the Roseville area.
Sure. So there's not five stories around the Roseville area. That's really only in these blocks right here. There's a, there's some medium on the other side of that. And then we took out those parcels that are next to Roseville Drive. And on the west side of Roseville, it's really low intensity that's near Roseville, not high intensity. But it, with regard to the five stories, the reason five stories is an issue is because we already have five stories in Homewood. In particular, we have, we're sitting in a five-story building right now that the city participated in the development of. And whether we, whether we would go back and change that or not, depending on who we are, we are sort of stuck with it and that that sets a precedent. And so within a certain area, there is an expectation that people can build five stories under the law and we would have trouble defending any downs. Because right, let's, let's make sure we all understand. We are downzoning. Regardless of whether anyone thinks it can happen or will happen, well, I don't think it's just, but it can happen. But regardless of whether anyone thinks it will happen, property owners have the right to build higher at this point. This is downzoning it to five stories. Downzoning it below five stories in the area that's high intensity becomes problematic because it's not defensible because of what is already here in the city.
And so why is it directly, I guess, a lot of people have a little concern about the density itself, also the height, but can you make those five stories meeting density as well?
So the, the intensity really has to do mostly with the stories, with the exception of high intensity allows this additional review process if you get over six, six units of residential. And so that wears on, medium intensity is capped at six units. The high intensity, we are doing a taking. Like I said, we are downzoning and we are doing a taking. By allowing for additional use, we are, we are in essence balancing out the situation.
Right, I think we covered that, but, but I still don't quite understand. Right, I think we covered that, but, but I still don't quite understand. You seem to be equating the two.
Yes.
But I'm saying maybe they're not equal, that there can be medium density even if it's a five-story building.
Sure, so, well, I think what I'm saying is that the high intensity, because we are doing a greater taking on those, that it, we are increasing the use, but we are making sure that that use only comes about if it has been reviewed and doesn't have a negative impact on the city.
And my next question was, is it possible to integrate parking into this plan?
So, there is parking in this plan, as Susan talked about. We, originally there was not, but we did put in parking requirements in this plan, which will require parking to be done regardless of the development.
Okay, and will that be above ground or below ground?
It could be either depending on the development and, and the parcel. In addition to, Mr. Shea, please, Mr. Shea, you're going to have your chance to get up and speak. Mr. Shea, you will have your chance to get up and speak, but I would like you to respect the speaker that we have currently. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Shea, I will, you will have your opportunity to speak. I'm sorry. I'm trying to answer your question. So in addition to the parking requirements that are included in this zoning, parking, it's sort of like with green space, parking and zoning overlap some, but all of parking does not fall within zoning and all of what we can do with parking does not fall within zoning. Parking, you know, the, we, we, parking is not a great thing that, parking problem is not a great thing to have, but it's not the worst thing to have in the world because it means that we're having a successful downtown. But we as a city, we as a city, if y'all will, just let me finish. We as a city should always try to improve parking because we do have a successful downtown. And we can try to improve on parking. Much, much of what we improve on parking will come outside of zoning and would have to come outside of zoning because the two interact. You don't want to get a requirement that has too little parking and you don't want to get a requirement that has too much parking because if you get a requirement that has too much parking, you end up with a strip center or something like a Walmart where you have too much parking and you lose the pedestrian act, aspect of downtown, which is one of the things that makes us so special. Quite frankly, what is on 18th now doesn't have a parking requirement. There, and so that's one of the things that makes that special is that people walk up and down, stop in stores, things like that. We want to maintain that feel while also addressing parking as much as we can. Thank you. All right, anyone else? Mr. Shea, would you like to come and speak? Okay. No, if you want to come up and talk, come up, they can't hear you on Zoom, Mr. Shea, so if- Okay, thank you. Anybody else that wants to speak for or against this item?
I just have two questions right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on what two other people asked, and I think the answer was insufficient. One was on parking and the other one's on green space. So, on the new plan, on the old plan, Jennifer has promised me they will not take up any more parking spaces, which was on the original plan with pots with trees in them. Correct. So the gal came up and asked about green space, trees, potted plants. And you said that's being considered.
I, if I said considered, I misspoke.
Okay.
It is part of the plan.
Where, where is it on the plan?
Sure. I'm going to let Susan come up and address what is, what is required in terms of streetscapes and things like that.
It's required moving forward if someone were to purchase something. What I'm asking is-
Someone were to develop something.
If someone were to develop something.
Right.
What I'm asking, well, A, number one, when Susan's up here, is it going to take the place of a parking space, number one? But are there any other? So on the previous map, you had pots and it wasn't just on 18th Street. And I think the question also referred to, is there any planned green space? Because we're talking about an overlay and talking about developers having the opportunity to purchase land, say the jail, which I don't know if anybody's purchased it. Is there an answer to that? So I, there's a lot of people here, I think, that are concerned about A, parking and B, green space, which are not being infused into this plan as I see it. Or if I'm wrong, correct me, is it on the plan? Is there some idea, are y'all going to move forward with it? Is it just going to sit here until somebody fusses about it? There's obviously a parking issue. I mean, people do the moans and groans, I know we're not supposed to say anything, but we're doing it. Same way with green space. So I just don't feel like it's being addressed while we're addressing the whole downtown area. We're not addressing those two concerns.
Okay, so what we're addressing is zoning. And so zoning does include a parking requirement. That is not going to deal, zoning is incapable of dealing with the entire parking issue and we will have to deal with that separately and in addition to what the parking requirements are that are included in this plan.
So there's no more potted plants in the plan like there were in the downtown master plan?
There's, there's no plan to change the existing parking. Is that what you're asking?
Existing parking and/or a, a thought process of we're going to put green space in, say, right in front of this building.
Sure.
Or where the jail is.
This plan, this plan does not envision any, any of that.
I felt like it was implied that it might be in consideration, but I haven't heard anything.
No, it is not. This is simply about zoning, not about a plan to, to make those changes or anything like that. All right, thank you, Ms. Teisinger. Anybody else? Going once?
Hello, Mr. Brazil? Good evening. I'm not really sure where to start, but I'll say this, most of my points have already been made by others. I guess what I'll do is just try to mop up with some comments regarding what I've heard. Number one, the Cohaba River Society said, "We need to be worried about the million tons of sewers that went into Shades Creek this year. No study has been done regarding the implementation of this plan and the impact it will have on sanitary sewer in downtown Homewood." Number two, Mr. Fitz, who happens to be a developer, who might know something about what could happen to down, on Homewood, got up here and said, "You're forget, ever going to change downtown Homewood if you do this," right? One of the property owners who filed a protest owns Merchant's Walk. They said they want five-story zoning where Merchant's Walk is located, which is directly across the street from historic Hollywood. My house was built in 1928. We've been there 24 years. We will raise three children in the Homewood City Schools. So I appreciate what was done to protect Rosedale. You should similarly protect Hollywood. And finally, given the substantive, well, I shouldn't say finally. Let me, let me get back to one thing, the whole diatribe with Mr. Fitz. There is no ability to put residential in C4B now. So the whole diatribe about, well, what's going to happen? And he's wrong and all this, that the new would be better, better protection? We're worried about residential, multi-story residential, currently C4B. No multi-story residential is possible. And so I will wrap up with this. Given the substantive changes to this plan, and that's what Ms. Henderson, the expert called them, substantive changes to the plan. I submit to you that this needs to go back to the planning commission before any final vote or further consideration is taken at the city council. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. Ms. Her, are you next?
Good evening. I just have a couple of questions here.
Just to quit, just a second, Ms. Her. Can y'all hear her? Can you pull that mic just a little bit closer to you?
I just have a couple of questions here. One is for Ms. Henderson. And then I have a, a kind of a statement to make. But I would appreciate you letting me finish my questions and then you can answer afterwards so I don't lose my time.
Sure.
Okay. First of all, did I understand Ms. Henderson to say that this 33 months, this whole 33 months included preserving and protecting downtown Homewood? If I am, if I did hear her say that, I wondered why 18th Street was not originally protected because it was originally set up so that it could be mixed use. That mixed use would have required tearing down what is there now and building two stories. So that is not preserving and protecting in its original form. The other thing is, I wanted to say is there's no need to repeat what all, everybody else has said. The majority of the people here are against this rezoning. We all elected you based on your promise to be open in your communications and to be transparent. There are, I would like first of all to thank Councilwoman Sims for notifying his ward and posting on Facebook about this hearing. He has, he has fulfilled his promise to be transparent and to-
I will wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay. Out of the five wards, only, only one ward provided top billing on this communication in ample time for this meeting. I did not see anything from Ward Two. It could have been, I just might have, not have seen it. And two wards provided top billing today, which was a little late for most people to get involved. So I just want you all to understand that you were elected based on your promise to be open in your communication and transparent with everything. The citizens are watching.
Thank you, Ms. Her. With regard to your statement that the original zoning plan would have required things to be torn down on 18th Street, were you talking about if something was being developed or? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes. If you had mixed use, which was in the original plan, it would have required what is there to be torn down because what is there will not support a second story. Okay? So it was not originally written-
Okay.
To preserve and protect.
Well, and just to be fair, it wouldn't have required two, at no point it would have required two stories. It, it could have been one story. It could have been, quite frankly, right now the limit is three. We are down zoning it to two, so. But I take your point and that was one reason we made the change because we wanted to make sure we did preserve and protect the 18th Street and 29th. So I thank you for your comment.
You're welcome, but people are asking for more protection.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shea?
I, I would like to say-
Oh wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Shea, go ahead.
I'm Jennifer, Ms. Andrews.
I would like to say, I send a, I send an email out every single week to my ward. I, I discuss this on a weekly basis and have forever, so I would take dispute with that.
I'll reiterate the same thing. I send a weekly email out to Ward One with a large number of subscribers and I've mentioned this at least twice, possibly three times.
Hey, Alex.
Yes, sir.
Hey, hang on just a second, I'm sorry. We had a lot of people who joined and every time you say anybody else, they are all unmuting. Can you just review that we are doing?
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. If you can just mention again that we are doing in-house first and then-
So everyone on Zoom, we are doing the people present in the chambers first. When we get to the end of that, we will, I will let everybody on Zoom know so that we can start taking comments on Zoom. So if y'all would just hang on and mute, I promise we'll get to you.
All right, Mr. Shea?
Okay, my family's been here for 100 years. We're not against change. That's what kept us in business for 100 years. I've been coming to council meetings since 19, since the mid 80s. I have a few questions. Alex White told me, I do appreciate Jennifer saying that we don't have a need. She'd been down, it was, we had a meeting and she said she'd been down to downtown, been around the hotel and there was no more need for parking down there. And I'm okay with, with our street not having more parking in terms of the way it is now. But if we put this more, if we put more density in there, we're going to need more infrastructure. And the current plan that Susan has now does not accommodate 1,000 square feet for three and a half parks and for three-bedroom apartment, two parks. So that's substandard for Homewood. Homewood is quality and we have, and equality has no fear of time. And I want to keep Homewood a quality neighborhood. We downtown on 18th Street, we do $90 million, the great area in retail and that is the crown jewel. We are looked at from many cities, they wish they could find something like this. Of the $90 million, that 4% flows into Homewood families that stay here. We don't want to disrupt that, we want to test that simply. As far as is it a taking or is it not? Well, I don't understand, it's a taking on everybody. This thing takes from everybody. I, I don't understand the density question. If for five years I have a house on 38th and we have a lot of high rises there and we argued that there should be no more high rises and there are no more high rises. So it's not really to me, I don't really understand how you can say five stories is defensible because we argued for 20 years that we wanted three stories and now that you tell us we got five, we should have got three. It's confusing. Okay, the only other question is this is less parking with more density and that's not what we're requesting. The, the gentlemen that tabled this are no longer here and I wish they were here to talk about this, to support this, but they've been removed. I have two big points here before the buzzer goes off and that is, how are we telling Valley Avenue we're going to tear down apartments? And how are we telling Brookwood Mall that Susan Henderson told us that the silver bullet in retail, or the silver bullet for rezoning is to have apartments? So my biggest question is, how are we going to tear down something on Valley Avenue a quarter mile away and tell Brookwood Mall that's going to need this particular silver bullet? As Susan says, the economic engine, which is known as apartments. When our area is thriving, we're doing well, we're pushing for more and more and more. So my question to Alex, because you're, is how are we tearing? And I don't want to hear that the school board did that. We are Homewood, we are a group of people, we are Rosedale, Edgewood.
I think we got your question.
So the question is, how are we tearing down something on Valley Avenue? No apartments there. And on the other hand, no, we need something at Brookwood Mall. But on the other hand, we're going to build it in downtown Homewood where we've been begging for density to balance parking.
Okay, so with regard to the Valley property, I don't know how else to answer it other than to tell you that that's the Board of Education's property. They're the ones who bought it, they're the ones who make decisions about it. The city council doesn't make decisions about that.
I also got a question. In 1926, Edgewood, downtown Homewood, West Homewood, all did what? They combined themselves as a joint community. We worked together as a community. These people here love this community. We're not looking to isolate a community.
I'm not suggesting that, Mr. Shea. What I'm answering your question is that the Board of Education made that decision, controls that property and they have the right to do so because they- I let you finish, you can let me finish. Is that fair?
I don't understand.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Then let me finish. The Board of Education bought that property, they control that property, they decide what to do with that property. They have the authority to do that without the city because they act independently of the city. You will have to speak to them about what they want, wanted to do with that property or what they currently want to do with that property. Now, with regard to Brookwood, we did have a group that obviously came in and proposed apartments. That, that group has now pulled out. There's a different group that I think we've all read about that has purchased it. They have not said what they want to do with that property. I don't know what they're going to do with that property because they haven't said to anybody that I'm aware of exactly what they want to do. So I'm not-
Last question I have for you. In 1926, when this community came together, it's five municipalities, we're giving, we're not going to, we're not going to work as a unity with all of our communities anymore? We're going to just look at, we're not going to look at what Brookwood Mall needs and what? That's what we did originally in 1926.
I will tell you that this council is doing whatever it does. Everyone up, everyone up. I'm going to answer the question if you'll quit interrupting me. I can tell you that everyone up on this council is going to do what they think is in the best interest of Homewood. That's what we were elected to do, that's what we will do. And yes, that includes- And yes, that includes looking at all of Homewood, both in individual things that come up and as a whole. And that's what we will do. I want to check with you about something, though.
Sure.
You talked about that you were concerned about the heights, correct?
I'm concerned about parking and I'm concerned about quality.
Okay, so you're not concerned about that.
I'm concerned about parking and I'm concerned about quality.
If you'll just answer my question, I answered yours. Are you concerned about the heights or am I misunderstanding you?
I live in three houses across this country. I live in three different communities besides Homewood. Where parking and quality align, there's not a problem. Structure dictates behavior.
I just want to make sure I understand your objection that you sent to the city.
Oh, one hundred percent. I agree with everything I said.
Saying the objection where you want it to be, where you want higher density.
You can reread the letter.
I'm reading the letter that you want.
But the point is, Alex, I've taken up my time because you're not listening to me. I'm concerned with quality and parking.
Okay, but you still.
One hundred percent appreciate that letter and support the letter because you're not listening. You're not listening. If you want to sit here all day, I got the time, okay?
Yeah.
About to go down to the beach for ten days, so I'm ready to chill out.
Good for you.
Let's work on this for a second.
We should go down there and do this there.
Let me tell you what, I've been coming up here for twenty years, asking for a comprehensive parking plan and trying to understand why all of these things that happened here.
Mr. Shea, I just asked you a question.
I one hundred percent appreciate what Trip Galloway said, or it might have been.
Where you want medium intensity for your property. Fantastic. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, next.
Good evening, neighbors.
Good evening.
Yes, I have a question that I.
I'm sorry, just will you give us your name so everyone on Zoom can know who you are and everything?
And Alan.
Thank you.
Yes, a couple of my neighbors and I, we have a question, and it's considering the amount of downtown, downtown real estate that has been bought and sold in the last past three years. Are you aware of any developments that are planned for the properties included in this new rezoning of this property?
No, not a one.
Well, y'all have a good night. I guess my neighbors and I are just worried about our Homewood in the heart of Homewood being ripped out by this whole change. I'm not against new change, and it's just, I don't know if this is the change in which our neighbors want.
Sure. I don't know of any, any development that is being considered planned and certainly nothing that's been proposed.
Okay, we just have heard so many things being bought and sold by big developers.
Absolutely. It's a reasonable question.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to read this as fast as I possibly can. A pitch, oh, I'm Sean Baracat. I live on Beckham Drive, Ward One. A petition with over twenty-five-hundred signatures was signed in twenty-nineteen to stop the last effort for this massive rezon plan. The pushback to table the rezon was correct. We must stop this plan. You must not vote on rezoning until a historic district is officially detailed, designated, and codified through the Historic Commission. I presented an historical overlay district option at three community input hearings or meetings this summer. That presentation was intended to cover a hundred and sixty acres of downtown or the map, the first version. You have reduced it to a few blocks. Why? Your edit to create the name Historic Overlay District on page six of this plan is obviously a gesture and a diversion. You show no serious intent or plans. It is a joke. A historic district is not defined or physically designated on the current proposed map. You have continually renewed a contract with a consultant who does not live in Alabama to sell a cookie cutter approach to urban planning and tell us what we can and cannot do in Homewood. This council voted again to give placemakers another contract to produce more edits. She dominates meetings, makes misstatements, intimidates others under the illusion of facilitation. She seems in place to protect the council. We do not like what you are paying for.
Ms. Baracat, you'll just wrap up for me.
I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
Why would anyone believe that the council wants to preserve and protect downtown Homewood when they've had ample time to do so? You can. You were elected to do a job. You have options. Vote no on the current rezon plan in its current form and allow the Historic Preservation Commission to work with the Planning Commission to create a real historic district. Immediately create and vote on an ordinance that officially recognizes the existing historic areas to date. It's listed on the U.S. National Register. Please answer my questions before you vote.
Thank you, Ms. Baracat. I will say that the historic overlay is the same thing that was in the original plan in a different form, which is the protection of Eighteenth Street and Twenty-Ninth Street, which is the, the most historic part of downtown. I think we can all agree. And that part will essentially stay the way that it is under this plan. It can only be two stories. There is no residential of any kind allowed. And it has to have storefront. So basically, those two streets will, or at least blocks, will remain what they are, even if they're rebuilt. They will be rebuilt in the same manner that they are now to be something like what they are now. And so that was something that we heard repeatedly, was important. That's why it was put in the, the First Amendment to the plan. And because people were concerned about the way that it existed in the plan, we did pull it out and make it historic overlay for that purpose. There are other parts of downtown that I think we can all agree probably are in need of some redevelopment and where redevelopment would be good. We want to make sure that we are allowing that and allowing downtown to proceed forward while at the same time putting restrictions on any such development so that we maintain the character of downtown and that we preserve those areas that are historic about downtown and make sure they stay the same. That's the purpose of the plan.
Okay, but there was never a historical overlay district that covered or was shown on a map for a hundred and sixty acres or two blocks. Never. And there was never, and there's still not anything in the revision edit, whatever we're calling it today. There's still nothing in there that supports or gives any details or any ideas about it. I mean, Rosedale is not even in this.
The historic overlay that's marked on the map does have very specific details about what it can and can't be. And I just went through those.
Rosedale is not included at all in that.
That's because Rosedale is a residential community.
Rosedale.
This is not a rezoning of a residential community.
No, it's, there's a hundred and sixty acres showing on that map, the third, fourth version, whatever. Rosedale's on that map.
But not being rezoned.
Right, but that's why it needs to be under a historical, it needs to have a district.
Okay.
And that overlay will protect, it will, it will fix all of these problems with heights and storefronts and glass and all this stuff. I mean, it's so simple. I don't know why the what, thirty-three months, thirty-three months it took to come up with this? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baracat. Mr. Williams.
President Wyatt, I would like to ask a few questions about use on appeal for clarification, please.
Absolutely.
You said that the, the language includes criteria for making the decision on use on appeal. What's the, where's the criteria?
So the criteria is just that if it has a negative, that the, that the developer has to prove that it doesn't have a negative impact on the city. And it has to address those three areas and show that it doesn't have a negative impact.
And how would you determine whether or not the developer has successfully proven that?
So that would be the BZA's purview under the appeal process under state law. And what, as I said earlier, it provides them with broad discretion to do that. So anything that they feel is negative. And so I would argue that one, anything, one extra student could be considered negative. One extra parking place could be considered negative. Any effect on traffic whatsoever could be considered negative. And that would provide them with the ability to deny it if they want to.
And so if a case came to them that added one student or required one parking place, they could consider that that was negative and they could deny the appeal, the request.
Correct.
And when the developer appeals that, saying this is ridiculous, you said adding one student is a problem. What is the objective criteria against which the one student or the one parking place is measured in the code?
Because that is considered to have a negative effect based on the information that they would gather from the schools, from the police, from the fourth floor. The information that they gathered, that would be their judgment to determine that.
Okay, so the developer is going to go to the schools and to the police department and the fire department. Every developer who wants to do this is going to do that, right?
Correct.
And what sort of burden does that place on those departments?
Well, it, it, they will have to get, get information, but those departments are prepared to do such.
In what way are they prepared?
They recognize that that's what would be required of this, and they, they are not, they have not said it would be too burdensome.
How much have you discussed this with the school board?
I haven't, I've notified, I've, I've talked to it with the superintendent about it, and he's aware of what is being proposed.
Okay, and he's willing to make, make that judgment and devote the manpower and the time to do that.
He, I have, I've discussed this with him, and he has not, he has said that it's not a problem that they will provide the information requested.
Okay, well, I think what you're referring to as criteria of having to go to the school board and go to the police department and so on is process. It's not criteria. Criteria can be measured, and you've not suggested anything that is measurable other than one student or one additional parking place. I'm not convinced.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. Next. What? Oh, I'm sorry, Susan, did you want to say something? Okay, did I maybe cover it? I'm sorry.
How y'all doing? Jeff Foster, 106 Hollywood Boulevard. First, I think things have definitely improved on the plan since last time I saw official copy. So thank you all for that. I know it's not easy. I have three questions, really. One is related to process. Earlier tonight, you mentioned the Rosedale properties that the north side coming out. Has any thought been given to just moving forward with things I think the majority of the folks in the audience agree with, with the historic overlay and then maybe the west side of the central business district with the low intensity? And pulling out everything not that to be looked at more closely. Related to that, the development plan for the high intensity issue where following up on the question below, in our current zoning book, and I guess this is a question more for you, Mr. Kendrick, why not impose that criteria on the mixed-use district in our current zoning book? And go through that process. And again, that's just some, some education for myself. The other thing is related to parking, and I know this is going to be in a butt, or a butt up against my concerns about stormwater. So in the high-intensity districts in particular, have we given any thought to requiring permeable surfaces for off-street parking, which I'm curious about? And then secondly, how did we get to one unit for each residential requirement? So right now, it's two parking spots.
I'm talking about what parking spots, you said unit.
Yeah, I'm sorry, two parking spots per unit. So the majority of people in Alabama, especially those under sixty-five, so like ninety-six percent of us, live with another person, and that person has a vehicle. And so again, I understand this, but this runs right in contrast to my question about stormwater. I get that. But that means they're going to be parking on the street potentially. And so I'm just curious about that.
Sure, okay. So with regard to, well, Mr. Kendrick, do you want to answer your question first?
I understand the question, but the plant, the development plan is required in our current zoning deals with mixed-use districts and several other districts. Okay, it deals with a mixed-use district plan because it doesn't require any particular parking numbers. It's exempt from parking numbers. Certainly you could.
So, and with regard to the idea of sort of taking it piecemeal, part of the reason that we are able to pull that out is because it's on an edge. And so we are not affecting those property owners, and pulling that out doesn't affect any of the other property owners as opposed to if we start to pull, and, and also there's a just degree of numbers, right? It's, it's a very few number of parcels. If we start to break it up, then we, I don't think we would have the same ability to do that.
No, and just to clarify, just the reason I ask is that the majority of the, I guess, the comments have been made a couple of times, and when I was on the planning commission, is there's thirteen zones downtown. Ninety-two percent of our parcels are C-one through C-four. The majority of the, the zones that are not that are in that western side of the central business district. And I guess, I guess my point is, do we want to take a win and address that first with low intensity to this historic overlay? And that was my comment.
Thank you. And I, I hope I've answered your question about that. Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else here in person that would like to speak for or against this item? Sure, I, Susan, you may be better able to answer this question. I mean, there is, you know, we, we started without any parking in it. We have started to put parking, we, we've gone back to add parking. I think that one, well, Susan, I'll let you answer. I don't, I don't want to speak to custom.
The, it's, it is a, it's a question of where do you want to spend your land when it's as precious and rare as it is downtown? And do you want to spend it on impervious parking lots, or do you want to allocate it for buildings? And for use? And so the, the, the best practice in downtown parking is not to require parking at all to allow it to occur organically. And having a one per, a one per, I'll wait until the, the Snickers stop.
You're good.
Having one per unit is, is the best practice in downtown parking standards because living downtown enables you to work and shop and live in the same neighborhood. It actually enables people to become one-car families. And there are trends, not just in southeast, but nationally, where there's data that shows the Urban Land Institute tracks that data, and, and they have studies to that effect. So I know we're Homewood, and I know we like to believe that there's nowhere else in the world like us, but the reality is there, there are national trends that, that, that apply. And so to require more parking than is necessary is environmentally very unsound practice. You increase your stormwater issues, you reduce your ability to have green space, which many people are concerned about, and rightly so. And you reduce any sort of economic development benefit of actually building buildings. So.
Thank you very much. All right, next.
Thank you for your patience with all of us. My name is Nan Smith. I live in Ward One. I sent an email to everyone on the council and the mayor and the city clerk this morning just to let you know that I was against this proposal. I'm not a business owner. I'm just a person who lives in, in Homewood, in Edgewood. I love my community. And this whole process has been somewhat agonizing for me because I'm not an attorney and I don't, I'm retired and I don't, I don't follow all the details. You seem to have an answer for everything, but when I wrote the email. But when I wrote the email, some of your questions have been answered tonight, particularly about the Rosedale changing of that zoning. So and I appreciate that. But, and I did get a response from Melanie Gier and I got a response from Mr. Sims to my email, which I really did appreciate. I didn't hear from anyone else, but I know you guys are busy. But I would just urge my two representatives, Mr. Gaultney and Ms. Gier, to vote against this proposal. Feelings are high, emotions, we've tried to keep them in check and some of us are more volatile than others. I mean, and they would be the first to acknowledge it. But, and it kind of is comical if it weren't so, such a serious issue. But I'm not convinced of that this is the best plan. And I really would ask that you vote against it as it stands. At least vote for a pause and for, to revisit some of these issues. I, I have family in Atlanta. I drive over there a lot. I've seen these four and five story slick little buildings like the Valley Hotel. And it's not a pleasing aesthetic to see. It's just bland and it is not charming like Homewood is. And yes, some of these buildings are not perfect in Edgewood, but they're popular. They're popular. So thank you for letting me speak my mind about this. And I hope you guys do the right thing and I hope you listen to what your constituents have, have spoken tonight very passionately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, who's next? I think I saw you sign in, but just want to make sure.
I was ready.
Fantastic.
So my short and sweet, my name's Amelia Jones. I'm in Ward 3. All I have to say is that I feel that this plan is not 100% ready. And you need to clean up the vagueness regarding the use on appeal section of this ordinance. I implore, I implore my Ward 3 counselors to vote no on this plan. So let's try for draft seven. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else here present that wishes to speak for or against this item? So they have been submitted to the clerk and they're made a part of the record? All of them? Sure.
Hi, everyone. Again, good to see you guys.
I, I mean, I know who you are, but if you'll just say your name for the record for everybody.
Sorry, um, yeah, I'm Sydney Simmons. My husband and I live in Ward 2. And I'm putting these on because I can't see any of your faces. After the planning and development meeting last week, I was trying to decide if I was going to say anything tonight. I had a lot of questions and concerns, which a lot of those I still have. I think everyone behind me has kind of hit on those at different points, so I'm going to leave those aside and just mention two different things. One of those things is I think that those of us that are asking questions and expressing concerns are not in the minority of the people in Homewood. I think if you compare us against the people that don't have a lot of knowledge on this plan, then sure, we might be in the minority. But if you compare us to those that are fully in support of the plan as it's written, I can't say that we are in the minority. I guarantee you that if you sit outside some of our public places and ask people their general feelings about the plan, that most would say, you know, I haven't read up a lot on it. I don't know exactly what all is involved. I've seen some things on the website. They wouldn't have a fully developed opinion at that point. But that's really no fault of their own because people are busy. They have kids and work and we've been in a pandemic for the last 18 months. So I truly don't think many people were paying attention throughout this whole process. And so that leads me to my next point. How did we get here today? We've been told that we need to be protected from 11 story buildings downtown. Well, I can't think of anything less likely right now than an 11 story office building being built in the middle of downtown Homewood. People are working from home more than they ever have. Companies have offered hybrid schedules. People can hotel at their offices so they can be there when they need to be and be at home when they can. So there's really no need for that at this point. What we do, I feel, need protection from are four and five story buildings between here and Highway 31 and A-Loft and Rose Hill Drive. There is, there is, there is sure, there is a demand for residential in downtown Homewood. But by allowing it to happen in unlimited numbers, our downtown is not protected. We want to put, we don't want to put the BZA in a position to word off developers at every twist and turn. What exemption? And that's what's included in the exemption. If we truly want to protect our downtown, let's put a historic overlay over 18th Street and 29th Avenue. Let's leave the commercial zones as they are, which allows for, allows for organic growth that we're already seeing in that area. It doesn't put our business owners that are staples of our community at risk of being bought out from, their buildings being bought out from under them. And I really hope you understand how important this is and what's at stake if we do get it wrong.
Thank you very much, Ms. Simmons. Anybody else here tonight that in, in the chambers that would like to speak for or against this? All right, speak now forever, hold your peace. Okay, then I'm going to cut off the in-room discussion and we'll move on to Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you would like to speak, please hit the raise your hand button. And then we will get you to unmute. Well, Mr. Alman, that's, that's not a bad idea. Yeah, how about we take a five minute break, let everyone use the restroom if they need to, and then we'll come back and do soon. All right. Okay, we've got Ms. Salter back, so we're ready. If everyone could please sit down so we can hear the people on Zoom. Thanks. All right. Again, if you are interested in speaking on Zoom, if you are on Zoom and interested in speaking, if you will, please raise your hand. Brian, I'm not, I'm not seeing any hands, which I'm thinking means on my screen. Yeah.
No, they're, they're there.
I'm just not
You want me to go ahead and call them out?
Yeah, because I can't see, they're not showing up on my screen and I can't see that far away. So if you can call them out, please.
That's fine, John, John, I do see you. You can quit waving, but we'll get to you in a minute, John. First, David Chaplin. David Chaplin, you can go ahead and unmute.
Um, yes, I'm speaking, Jane Chaplin is his computer. I have two comments and one question. First of all, in response, we live in Ward 5 and in response to a comment earlier that has been, not have been a transparent process for the last many, many months, we have had from our counselor total transparency, weekly notices. And she, her letter is available to anybody who wants it. So I, I feel like it's been very transparent. Second, when people are saying the majority, what the majority of Homewood residents want, I don't feel comfortable when someone speaks for everyone else. And it's not necessarily that, that I feel or that we feel this is a perfect plan. But we've seen how this council, all the meetings we've gone to has been slogging away through all these months. And we're very much in favor of, we need better zoning. Whether or not this is the end product, we need something. And we feel like there's been an earnest effort to try to come up with a better plan. And we appreciate that. The, my last thing is a question in the discussion of parking. Is it possible for zoning to address, if there is in the degree to which it addresses parking, to require the parking be permeable in regard to like helping with the stormwater issues? Or is that outside of the purview of a zoning plan?
I'm going to let Susan address that.
Normally that's handled through public works because it has, the engineering is tricky. And especially, it, it depends on regionally and, and its success rate depends completely on how good you are at maintenance. Because you have to keep the infiltration paths clear. So that's about all I know about it. I'm not an engineer. But I do know that most public works departments get incredibly defensive about it because they understand that it will come back on the city if it fails. And I would just say that it's normally a public work standard, but it can be referenced in zoning.
So in other words, we could, we could handle that separately from
You could, yes.
Our, on our own, as a standalone.
Yeah.
Before we, this is David Chaplin. I just would like to add that I'm totally confident through everything I've seen about how the council works and allowing my counselor to speak for me on this issue. I think she's done an incredible, my, our two counselors have done a great job of keeping good communication and being aware of what we think. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Chaplin. All right, Brian, I, I'm at least seeing some now. I think we've got Stephen B.
Hey, guys. Forgive me for not having video going. I'm on, I'm on my phone. Working and joining late, so I appreciate y'all having this opportunity for us to talk. I'm, I'm a Ward 1 property owner, nowhere in the high intensity zone, but near it. And I just wanted to, you know, quickly discuss this whole thing. I'm not from here originally. I'm actually from Atlanta. I know somebody mentioned that earlier about driving through Atlanta and seeing it. Part of the reasons that my wife and I fell in love with this place is because it's not going that way. I'm also a dirt lawyer, so I understand real estate decently well. And I know everybody can get excited about Louis Nacquette renderings. I mean, you know, people here doing multi-million dollar deals downtown can't even afford them. So of course you want to pick the best one to look at, but that's so far from the feast. I mean, it's so far from the feast. And so my, you know, my issue is, is how much has this already cost the taxpayer of, you know, a Homewood resident right now to even be here for six iterations with all kinds of panels of experts and, and, you know, all kinds of zoning people? I mean, what is that even costing right now to just sit here? And we're still sitting here. People are still upset about it. I just don't understand why you just keep beating a dead horse with this idea. And so I, I really would like an answer as to how much it's already cost. How much is still left in the budget to pay these experts to be here to draw up plans that are seemingly extremely vague, first of all, when it comes to the, the review and appeal process? So, you know, and I don't understand how if the objective complaint from the first iteration was multifamily housing downtown in Soho area, you know, where all the good old shops are and restaurants, Johnny's and Salem's are. I don't understand how you're considering protecting those places when you're talking about demoing them and, and putting big buildings in, or at least making room for residential multifamily residents there. I mean, you've got, you've, you've got a huge, huge empty building in Brookwood Mall that y'all can't figure out. And I know everybody likes to pass the buck, you know, and govern us and I, and I get that some of that's fair. But at the same time, the market should speak for itself. And if we haven't gotten, you know, this big issue of, well, someone's coming here to develop and we've got to just lock down zoning to prevent it. Because like you said earlier, which I know y'all aren't clunder oath, but at least there is a record of this. You have no idea of any deals coming to Homewood. Have no clue of any deal coming down with. I would just like a little bit more transparency, I guess, for Ward 1 as to how our money's currently been allocated over the last six iterations of this plan. And, and is there any end inside or y'all just going to beat this thing until somebody finally loses enough steam to quit coming to these meetings?
So Stephen, first of all, can you give us your last name just because?
Sure, that's fine. Bo, B O D E.
Thank you. So, oh, I'm sorry, Melody, we give it to us one more time? Did you say Bo?
Yeah.
B E A.
No, B Bravo Oscar Delta Echo.
Bo, sorry, I misunderstood you. I apologize. So, first of all, I, I don't have the number that we have, we have charged as, as we sit here right now, Lindsey May.
What I can say is from the contracts that the city signed with the regional planning commission and the project was the combined downtown Homewood master plan development as well as the zoning up until February or March of 2020 when our contract ended. So we, the regional planning commission, we use federal transportation funding so that paid for 80% of your project cost. And so the total combined was $300,025. So out of that, the city of Homewood paid $76,000.5.
Okay, thank you.
And that was included a $20,000 extension.
Okay.
I don't know which y'all are paying, you know, which y'all paid placemakers since then, but out of a $300,000 project, originally the city of Homewood paid $56,005 and they added $20,000 to it.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, Mr. Bo, with regard to your comments, I just want to make sure that everyone understands there's nothing, you, you referenced Johnny's and Salem's and mentioning, mentioned that this plan would demo those. Actually, it's, it's the opposite. The 18th Street where Johnny's and Salem's is can't the, the historic overlay provides that those can only be what they are or something similar to what they are. They can only be two stories. They can only, they can't be residential and they have to have a storefront. And there's nothing that would require anything to be demoed. Now, if someone comes in and develops something, then it has to live up to the conditions of these plans. But there's nothing about the plan that requires anything to be demoed. So I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page about that. Next, I think we have Marlene Burnett. Ms. Burnett?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you, council. I am a resident of Ward 1 here in Rose Hill. My grandparents purchased this house in 1938 and my family has owned it since then. A lot of my questions have maybe been answered. I just wanted to thank Revinsky, Revan Steele and Ms. Bearcat for speaking about the historical issues of Rosedale. Because Rosedale is historically recognized by the United States government. Why is it that Homewood continues to not include us as historic residents? Will not take up the issue, will not have the, the committee to even look at that issue so that they can stop encroaching upon the Rosedale community? As well as, we're not being protected. We have lost so much land, so much land here in Rosedale. It is just absolutely, people that, that are new to the council would not know. I'm so afraid at this point that because you are new to the council, you want this off your plate. It's been going on for 33 months. I'm tired. All these people, most people here are tired of this issue. And the beat down is beat you down. Just, just wear you out until you stop fighting for your issue. Now, as well, why are you rezoning churches like Union Missionary? That, I mean, that church is over 130 years old and you're rezoning it from institutional to LI? I mean, that is just ridiculous to me. Why is it, why is it even considered in that? There are one, two, Bethel, Union Missionary, Fellowship, Homewood Church of God. There are four churches here in Rosedale. All of these churches are over 100 years old. And they're all getting encroached upon one by one.
Ms. Burnett, you'll just wrap up for me.
I'm going to wrap up, but I really want to know why the historical, the, the protection that were given by the United States of America, Homewood will not address that. And keep, keep the grabbing, keep the, the feeding from coming this way. That's what I want. That's one of my main questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burnett. Just to be clear, this, this is not deal, this plan does not deal with residential rezoning. It's not attempting to rezone anything that's residential, just commercial areas. So it is not attempting to adjust or change any of the residential properties. So it is not attempting to adjust or change any of the residential properties in, in Rosedale. I think next we have Mary Alt Smith.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
If I might add, so currently Rosedale has a federal and a state historic designation. During the last term, I proposed and we passed on to the HHPC a request, which is where the historical designation at the local level starts. We requested that they start the process to refer to council with the associated guidelines that would give Rosedale that local designation. So Counselor Gier may be able to give an update since she's the liaison to the HHPC as to where it stands.
I'm not the liaison, Ms. Smith.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I, I would like to add since I'm speaking that we are the Union Missionary Church is not commercial. It's currently institutional and it is included. And we should probably, I'm, I'm for taking that out and allowing that to stay institutional. And I think we should do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Lisa, thank you.
Mary Alt Smith.
Unmute me. I'm Mary Alt Smith. I've, I've lived in Homewood for 40 years. I've been through a lot of iterations of zoning and changes. I have to applaud the city council that somehow they've survived placemaker and Susan's recommendations for six iterations, but she usually gets it through in three iterations. I have two major questions. You use Soho as an example for why every other new development has to be four to five stories and yet capriciously, you've changed the 18th Street to two stories. You've eliminated Rosedale's encroachment. It seems to me that most of us are concerned about four and five story stick developments like behind the Grand Bohemian. That's going to be downtown Homewood. If you would just reconsider limiting the height of these buildings and not hide behind the fact that was somehow we let Soho, I agree with the other commenter, Soho is enough. That two hotels are enough for downtown Homewood. We need to limit the development and the height to one and two stories. If you would just do that, I think all of us would be largely in agreement.
Thank you very much. We've got at least one more, Barbara Wheeler.
President Wyatt, you got two more. You got me too. I don't know why you cannot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get to you, Ms. Wheeler. Are you ready?
Yes. Barbara Wheeler, I live in Ward five. Jennifer Andrus has done an incredible job. I do agree with keeping us informed on what's going on. She and I don't always see eye to eye on everything, but we love to agree to disagree. But I have a couple of questions. If the, exactly what Mary Alt Smith was talking about. If the reason that we are going with a five story building in the high density areas has to do with the city hall was built and that set this precedence. Why did the precedence not contain the region's building? It's even higher. Why did we, how do we discount that building? But yet we have to consider the Soho and the city hall as being the reason that we could end up in some trouble if we changed it to even three stories would be better. I totally agree with Mary. That is, if you change that down to three stories at the max, you would probably have everybody on board with this. And the other thing I have, I have one other question is, I think I read in the in the review of this was that there's also group homes could possibly be put into that area. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Ms. Wheeler, could you ask that again?
Is it true that group homes can also be approved or are approved by this new plan?
Mr. Kendrick, you want to answer?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. State code prohibits cities and municipalities from discriminating against group homes or any type of residential that caters to disabled people by state and federal law. So I don't think we want to go there.
Well, then if we took out the residential and that would eliminate apartments from coming in over there as well, would that take care of that?
Well, if you limit residential, yes.
Okay. Well, then that would be something that I would think that you guys ought to go back to the drawing board and talk about. I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to end up with the blight that we had on Valley Avenue and you, and I know the city, the Board of Education tore those apartments down, but there were some very valid reasons to tear them down. And we don't need any, I don't think we need any more apartment buildings in the downtown Homewood area.
Ms. Wheeler, if you will, just wrap up for me and you may have.
Okay, that's a wrap.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Cronteris. Yeah.
Yeah, am I up?
You're on.
All right, sir. You know, the President Wyatt, John Cronteris, 220 Lakeshore Drive. The resident of Homewood for 52 years and also a member of the planning commission. I have two questions. Number one, when was the parking study done for this plan? And if the study was done, you know, how, if, if the study was not done, how can you vote on it tonight?
You want to go ahead and ask your second question? I'll answer them. We can answer them.
And the second, the second question, I hope you understand what I'm trying to say correctly. Because I hate to put it this way, everyone that is there tonight complaining about everything that needs to be done. What is the solution? And I'll tell you what the solution is. The solution is if they're not happy with you guys up at the planning, at the city council, run for office and vote you all out for the next election.
All right. So with regard to the parking study, Lindsey, you want to answer that? I don't have it in front of me.
It was not a parking study. It was a parking inventory that was done as part, as part of the scope of work for the downtown master plan. It's the first thing that my team completed was in April of 2017. It can be found in the existing conditions appendix. That's part of that downtown home and master plan on the heart of homewood plan.com. It included both city-owned parking as well as some private parking that we were told to go inventory by the previous city planner at the time. So again, we called it a parking inventory, not a study. It did, we did have recommendations that came out of it. But it was all part of the downtown home and master plan.
So if, so if this plan is approved, the parking study is already approved or already done.
The parking inventory was already done. Mr. Kendrick, do you have a?
Yeah, I would like to just practically speak to John's question. It's impossible and it would be a waste of, be a LARP to do a parking study on a potential zoning ordinance because it, it doesn't specify what is going to be done. It specifies what can be done. It'd be impossible to expect that every piece of property is going to be developed, developed to its utmost degree in use. So it would be a waste of time and money to do a parking study based on a projected use of property until it's actually been rezoned and then it's being developed. So.
And I'll, I'll just point this out that, that with regard at least to high intensity, that if, if someone is proposing something over the six units for residential, that parking is part of what they have to address. And so I think that's some of what Mr. Kendrick is talking about is that it would, rather than address it as a whole, we would be, the, the city would be looking at specific projects and, and noting the expected effect on parking that that would have within those projects.
Once you know what the use is going to be.
Right.
So it's based, it's based according to the project. In other words, that's why you're trying, you're saying?
What I'm, what I'm saying is that each project would be used individually and that way you would know exactly what was going on that parcel. And that would result, and then you could have a better use of, a, a better parking study because you would know exactly what the use was for that property. All right. I don't see any more hands on mine. Brian, do you see any more on yours?
No.
Okay. So any, anyone else on Zoom? Anyone raise their hand? If not, then I will close this public hearing. And ask if there are any comments or questions from council. Oh, well, yeah, that's fine. We'll, we'll do comments and questions first. If not, then I'll get Mr. Kendrick to do the first reading. Mr. Sims, do you have one?
Yes, please. I just, I just have a question about this. So we have, so first of all, one nuance thing, we're talking about the underground parking. And we just want to clarify with Susan whether or not that counts as a floor or storage. Or with
In other words, if you have a parking underground, stories are just from the ground up regardless of whether you have underground parking.
Okay, we just, it was just a question. I felt like now is the time to ask. And also, again, I just want to make the statement that, you know, I think there was a lot of good considerations made about from, from a lot of people about the north downtown area. And again, even though we've taken out that segment along Rosedale Drive, that that there's parts of the existing zoning that are lower intensity or equal intensity to the low intensity on the map. But yeah, I feel like we're still up zoning them. And that's really near that area where, you know, historically Rosedale, not the preserved area of Rosedale on the boundary, but historically Rosedale is there. So definitely AMC is right across the street from an area that's medium intensity. And the future land use plan, it's, it's low intensity. And I just feel like with the consideration of that and the due diligence of what needs to be done still. I mean, I feel like this still needs to go back to the planning commission to reconcile that with the future Laney's plan. And I would like, I would like that to be our motion to do that, you know, to correct the Laney's, the future Laney's plan to match the proposed ordinance. And it, I, I think it can be done in a way that's not a taking, in a way that reconciles some of the concerns about Rosedale because after, after this, we don't get a chance to go back and create that border for Rosedale the way it needs to be. And I think that that's, that's the motion is to send it back to the planning commission for the north down area, north downtown area to reflect the future land use plan for the north downtown boundary in the, in the master plan. And to also make exceptions for the historic churches that are within that perimeter. And I just, I mean, my, I have serious caution, you know, moving forward with anything else. I mean, it's been a painstaking process. And, and one thing I want to say is, you know, I greatly appreciate the counselors in discussion with this. And, and I hope that we're always, you know, I heard some comments tonight that were a little divisive. Definitely some that, you know, were professional and I, and I apologize to our consultants who've worked on this because I believe everyone has the best interest at heart in, in protecting Homewood on this. And, and we may disagree about how to get there. I didn't, I didn't run on this issue really for Ward three, that's for sure. So I, 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 I defer to my, you know, Ward one counselors and constituents to wait, you know, on this and make changes that reflect the future Laney's plan and, and also, you know, preserve Rosedale. And, and that's my desire.
Okay, so any other comments or questions? Ms. Gier, are you raising your hand?
I am. Yes, thank you. I would like to reiterate that I do think we need to change the zoning on Union Missionary. I, I had inquired about Bethel AME zoning change when we had meetings with Susan and the response I got was, well, it's not going to hurt them to be changed to mixed use. It'll just make their property more valuable. And the, the, the Union Missionary Church slipped by me that it was actually being rezoned. So I think we should definitely, if they're asking to be kept institutional, we definitely need to do that. The Bethel AME gets resolved by taking those two blocks off the map. If I'm not mistaken, they're in that zone. So I believe we absolutely need to make this change before it gets voted on. And since it was mentioned, you know, yes, I am Ward one and I did run on this issue. And, you know, knowing where to start in this rezoning proposal discussion, you know, I'm just going to start where I started a few years ago, which is with the downtown master plan and the, the public involvement surveys that were a result of the downtown master plan. When you look at the master plan, that happened in the October 2018, that plan was, was adopted. On the first few pages, it talks about master plans and what they're meant to be. And I quote, "Master plans are meant to be based on the resident's vision of how they want their city to grow." And, you know, I have just never believed that this master plan and this zoning actually addressed what the survey results showed in the, in the public involvement process. And just, just to, I just want to briefly go over the four questions, four questions that were asked in the public surveys that I believe directly impact how our residents feel about this, the zoning downtown and what they want to see downtown. First question that was asked of our residents was to rank the importance of the four improvements that they wanted to see downtown in order of importance. And number one improvement said to maintain the character and identity of downtown Homewood. The number two improvement was to provide green space and updates to landscaping. Number three improvement was to construct and repair sidewalks. And number four was to attract some more businesses downtown. When residents were asked the top five challenges facing downtown, they said the condition of sidewalks was number one. Amenity shortages like outdoor seating, green spaces, pocket parks, shade trees was number two. Addressing traffic flow was number three. Lack of maintenance to current amenities was number four. On and on and on. And the last one on number 10 was the lack of housing types and prices downtown. When asked which of the following housing types were most needed downtown, the overwhelming response was, number one response was, I don't think there needs to be additional housing downtown. That received 56% of the replies of the survey respondents. The neck, number two, the next two highest types of, of housing supported, they each received 20% positive responses was affordable rental units, not necessarily apartments, just affordable rental units and senior housing. Number three condos townhouses received under 17% positive responses. Other apartment buildings received under 5% positive responses. And then finally, the last question that was asked that I think relates to the zoning, what type of new development or additional uses would you most like to see in downtown Homewood in the future? What type new development do you want to see? Number one with 73% positive response was parks and open spaces. Number two with 53% was restaurants. Significantly, significantly below that in, in descending order, 36% responded. They wanted entertainment venues, grocery stores, specialty groceries and retail. And close to the bottom, only 11% responded positively to medium and high density residential condos and apartments. So I, I just, I feel the way I did a few years ago. I, I want to see us go back and look at what we're doing with the zoning map. I certainly believe that there are many improvements that have been made downtown in the last three years. And a lot of that, I think we can attribute to this council and some of the things that you've put in place. We've improved infrastructure. We've done sidewalks. We've, we've done a lot of things downtown that have caused, caused the kind of development that our residents would like to see downtown. We're seeing it in the north quadrant right now. The smaller scale redevelopment is happening. And, you know, I just want, I'm here to represent my ward and the people in Homewood. And I believe what I heard them say was that they don't want what this zoning appears to be giving. And I'd just like to work through the zoning to help give what we're, what, what the majority of the folks want. And I think we can do that. I think we've made a lot of progress. I think, I think we can get to the right answer. I just don't think we're there yet. And I appreciate it. Appreciate everybody.
Anybody else?
Yes, I wanted to just talk a little bit about some of the challenges that, that those of us who've been working on this for a long time have faced. So people understand. You know, the first comment out of the gate tonight was that we have hidden agendas or what have you. And, and I wanted to reassure everybody that is absolutely not the case, that we all worked on this with very hard, with open hearts and open minds. And, um, you know, it's been a long process. But it's, we have, you know, I use the term threading the needle. We have been trying to take a situation where we were given five, five buildings that were five stories or higher. You know, I understand the legalities of taking space from somebody who owns a piece of property. You know, they own that property, they own the air above them. So we were trying to thread the needle as far as, you know, taking from them without risking the city being sued. And I want you all to know, you know, things that you may not know, which even, even tonight, walking into this meeting, we get letters from lawyers representing people who are in this room tonight saying that we, that, that we are taking from them. So tonight, walking into this meeting at 5:55, we got a letter from a lawyer from someone in this room tonight saying that, that we are taking from them because we have downzoned them and requesting that property to be upzoned. So, so that's, that's the challenge that we have faced. And that's what we've been trying to balance. So I know, I know, you know, we've gotten some emails that in my mind took some shots at us. And, you know, that's just not the case. We really have worked hard with, with each other and with you and with, with, you know, the other folks that aren't here. Let me share a story that, that happened today, actually. I had a meeting today with one of my constituents. I won't name them. But that person has a lot of experience in real estate and a lot of experience with zoning, actually. I know that. That's not why we were meeting. We were meeting about something entirely different. And that person, you know, I said to that person, you know, I have to ask myself these questions. Can somebody come in right now and build something 11 stories? You mean, you hear 11 stories? Can that happen right now? And I'm going to be perfectly honest with you with how this conversation went. And that person said to me, I don't think so. I said, okay. I said, what about eight stories? And this person said, yes. And I said, what about seven, you know, six, seven, eight? Yes, they can right now. And those of us that were on the council, you know, when the hotel was going through the process, we heard it and we're still hearing it. Five stories. You know, we still heard it, five stories and how, and, and people didn't like it and they didn't like feeling closed in. So, so right now legitimately, somebody who has, who didn't want to come tonight because they were worried that their business would be affected if they showed that they supported this plan. And they told me they supported this plan, that they were afraid to come here tonight because they didn't want to be social media fire. They didn't want to be, they didn't want their business impacted. Said eight stories, absolutely. So, so we've been balancing that with letters from lawyers. And people who say one thing, but actually are sending us letters from lawyers asking for something else from day one on that. And we've been trying to balance all of that. And so, so I have asked myself a question. Do I believe that somebody can build something taller than five stories? I do believe that. And I know you guys don't want that because I heard about it when we built the hotel. Not we, when this, when the hotel was built. So I know you don't want more than five stories. So do I believe that you can build more than five stories right now? I absolutely believe that. Do I understand why we set the limit at five stories? I do. I explain, I understand it. It's been explained to me by our consultant, by the regional planning commission, by our zoning department, by our city attorney and by our council president, who is an attorney, and by our previous council president, who is also attorney. So I understand that there is a giving and a taking in what we're doing in that process. So I just wanted to defend the process that we have been going through for, yes, 33 months. And honestly, I was excited to work on this process. Counselor Gaultier, I love downtown. I thought it'd be amazing. And I do have constituents who have said they would like to downsize and move down into downtown and residential. And I want to thank everybody for their emails and their feedback and for being here. And we really, I know you think that we put things on a calendar to make it inconvenient for you or we're trying to beat you down or, but we're not. You guys brought us here. Like, we are here now because all the improvements that you added to this plan. Yeah, we can, I can look directly at plan, at the plan and say, I know who added that. I know why we added that. We added that for that person who lives in this community or that person who owns that business improved our process and our plan. That's, that came from that person. So we want your involvement and we appreciate it. So I just wanted to give you some background and let you know we are not taking money out of the table from developers. This is not, this is not, we're not trying to harm our community. We love our community. And that's, that's all I got to say.
Alex, Mike. Sorry, Brian. Thank you. Sorry, everyone. Thank you, Brian, for reminding me. I, you know, someone asked me about the 11-story building. And, and I do think it's possible. And I think Susan has shown that it is entirely possible. But someone asked me if I was really worried about an 11-story building being built, you know, next week. My answer to them was, no, I don't think that someone's going to go out and build an 11-story building in downtown Homewood next week. Am I concerned that someone might build six or seven stories? Sometime in the next few years? Yeah, I am. And then five years later builds seven or eight stories. And now we don't have, we're not talking about can we limit to five stories? We're talking about can we limit to seven stories? And then a few years later, we get to nine or 10 stories. And now we're talking about limiting it to that. Well, at that point, we've pretty much lost downtown home, the charm of downtown. And we have the ability right now to put in that limitation. And I think it's important. I think that the plan that we currently have does an excellent job of balancing all of the different interests that we have heard from many different people. I think it balances the interests of what people on council have been concerned about. And I think that it represents a good plan moving forward that achieves the goal of protecting downtown and allowing redevelopment within a reason, within reasonable restrictions in those places where redevelopment might be a good thing. I'm concerned about not only six, seven stories and just sort of stair stepping up. I'm concerned about what can happen with 18th Street right now. I'm concerned about the ability to build three stories on 18th Street. I think that that has the potential to really damage 18th Street. Which is why I think the historic overlay is so important. I think there are aspects of this plan that are essential to protect downtown Homewood. And that's why I think the plan is important. And that's why I think that we are to a point where it is important to move forward on. And it's not because I think, you know, I'm looking for some development to come in, specific or general. It's because I think that that's what is good for Homewood. I agree with Ms. Andrus that this has been a long process. It's been one that has gone through numerous public input. I couldn't tell you the number of conversations I've had about this in three years. Including with you, Mr. Lane. I know you weren't listening. It's okay. So I, we have, we've all had a number of conversations. Public, private, groups, individuals. We've listened to those. We've addressed those. We have come up with what I think are reasonable ways to address them. And I'm proud of the plan that, that we've worked through with all of you. The plan that we have worked through, through listening to all of you and trying to address those things. No, I don't know of a plan that's going to be perfect for everyone. I think there are always going to be things that probably just about any of us would change if we were in charge by ourselves. And I mean that not just up here, I mean that in the community as well. That's part of this process. And I, I just want to, once again, thank all of you. Thank everyone who has been on Zoom. Thank everyone who has been involved in everything up till now over the past three years. Again, that's how we've gotten here. This is the process that we go through. This is, this is how this works. And I think that it's important to have that process and we have. I also want to thank Susan and Lindsay. I think that people, to Mr. Sims' point, have unfairly taken some shots at y'all. And y'all have done good work. And quite frankly, you've done the work that you've been asked to do. You have, you've done the work based on not just the parameters that the council has set for you and the objectives that we have set, but you have done the work that responds to what you have heard from the public at all of these meetings. And I very much appreciate that. But I personally believe that we are at a point where we have, we have sort of come up with a plan that includes all of the things that we had, all of the issues that have been raised, that we have addressed them in a reasonable way. And that we simply need to move forward with it. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments or questions? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just from a process standpoint. You know, I was on, I guess when we had the last public hearing, it was right around Christmas time and we had, we had a lot of, a lot of owners of property downtown that were really in a stress situation. And that's when we, again, delayed, delayed the vote and made some changes. But we're, we're back now with this. And I just, I asked the council, I guess in general, if, you know, I respect everyone's opinion here on the council. But from a process standpoint, if we can at least have a vote on the, on the, on the, after we do the first reading and get unanimous consent, let's have a vote. If it doesn't pass, then, you know, it'll go away and then we'll, we'll address some of the other items. But I, I say, we have been working through this issue for so long and we need to get to the end of jobs with this, in my opinion. And I think we've made some really good changes with, along the way. But I just kind of encourage everyone, let's, let's at least have a vote so we can determine if we're going to move forward on it. Thank you. Sure, Mr. Sims.
I just want to respond that, to that, to you about my concerns about, if we have a vote and it fails, I feel like, you know, there's been concerns that then the whole process of rezoning dies, which is, which is not what I want. I do believe that rezoning needs to happen. So when I make this statement I did before, I am concerned about the 11-story building as well. Or the eight-story that's feasible. But it doesn't seem imminent either. And I know more time sounds painful. But I also just think that there's, we can't make changes to that map, as you alluded to, unless we send it back to planning commission. We've removed the parcels we can without hitting the substantial change threshold. So I think we just need to, or what the motion was, is to send it back to the planning commission with the consideration of north downtown sector in the master plan so that we stair step away from Soho downtown, which is the core downtown, which is what the master plan and other guidance, even with the consultant recommends. Now, I understand in stepping back, we have to worry about C4B zoning and the considerations in place for not infringing upon property owners' rights. But I also see in that existing zoning map that there's zoning that steps back to C4A that right now we have high intensity. And there's other landowners who've expressed a desire to maintain, you know, low intensity and not to be higher intensity. So I think we have an opportunity to protect even more than we are currently. And that is, that, that is my concern in sending it to a vote is if it fails, we lose that opportunity to protect even more either by it failing completely and the whole rezoning dies. Or we had a better future land use plan map that we lost an opportunity on. Which, by the way, in the administration of the code, when, when a, when a request for rezoning comes to the planning commission, they're to refer to the future Laney's plan for guidance on rezoning decisions. If that whole north downtown section has already been changed, that's one third of the future Laney's plan map that becomes invalid for future decision making. And, and I know we've had these discussions before and we continue to maybe agree to disagree on some of these things. But again, respectfully, that, that is my desire. And that's why, again, I, my motion would be to send it back to the planning commission for consideration of the north downtown area to reflect the future land use plan more, knowing that, you know, there's still some high intensity in there because of the precedent of the hotel and across the street from Soho. But also the opportunity to make specific considerations in north downtown for the preservation of historic Rosedale beyond even what the federal government and the state recognizes.
Anybody else?
I just want to clarify. I mean, we'll only have a motion for a vote if unanimous consent passes, correct? There will be other-
Correct. There would be an initial, there would be an initial motion for unanimous consent that after the first reading, there would be a procedural vote. And then they only vote, the vote tonight would only take place if that passes.
Okay. Well, when will, when can changing the zoning for Union Missionary happen if, if in this process?
So I think that what we've said is that to pull that out of the zoning, what, Susan, you want to go ahead? You can describe, you can answer that maybe.
Since that is an edge parcel and it and the house behind it are both, they have the same criteria as the, as the parcels along the northern boundary. You, I, because of the very low number of parcels that have been removed, I would say the council has the option, but I defer to Mr. Kendrick, of removing those two additional parcels. Yeah.
Okay, so you can make a motion to remove those. And just so everyone understands what we're talking about. At a certain point, we've done enough that you remove enough parcels, it becomes a problem. So I don't want us to start cherry picking parcels because that's, that's going to become a pretty big problem. And it's going to become sort of an ambiguous and capricious issue. So, but if you want to move to, you can move to remove those two parcels.
Can I speak to that one issue?
Sure.
I understand Ms. Gears' point and certainly not trying to debate that one way or the other. But whatever the zoning classification is, if you remove it or you don't remove it, that property can only be used for anything other than its current use. If the present owner, the church, elects that they want to be something more than, different than they are now. So it's a little bit of form- So it's a little bit of form over substance. If the church wants to stay there, they can stay there as long as they want to, no matter what use on it, because it's a non-conforming use that maintains its use as long. It would be now.
It would be allowed by the new reset, by the new zoning.
You're correct. You're exactly right. I'm sorry. So, I, I mean, I appreciate that we need to address our, there's a desire to address it, but it changes nothing as far as the use of the church and its building. Whatever you do, whether you take it out or you leave it in.
I, I think the, the point is, and the, whatever you want to move, you feel free to move, but I do want everyone to understand that there's nothing about the zoning that says that church can't continue to be a church.
Absolutely.
And they own the property and so they can, they, they control, and, and I know you and I have had this conversation, but just so everyone understands. They own that property so they can continue to have it be a church as long as they want it to be a church. This would just increase the uses if they ever chose to sell the property, which would obviously be up to them. That being said, if you would like to make a motion, certainly feel free.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we remove the parcel, is it two parcels? Two parcels, not two churches, but the, the, the house and the church parcel from the zoning proposal, the zoning plan, for future consideration.
Second. All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Gears, second by Mr. Gualtney.
Mr.
Mr. Gualtney. Yes, sir. You, you need to identify him, Mr. Kendrick.
Yeah, it simply would delete the property most westbound between 26th Avenue South and 27th Avenue South. Is that correct?
That sounds like an accurate. Would you like the parcel number?
Yes.
I've got a, something else that.
The exact address is 1731 26th Avenue South.
Okay.
For Union Baptist Church. I don't know the address of the house.
The other address.
That's the address of the church.
The other address is 1729 27th Avenue South. I'm sorry, 1720 27th Avenue South. Yeah, okay. And I can, I have the parcel, I can email you. Okay, so we've got those identified now. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is 11 to 0, so those have been removed. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Tonight? All right, uh, if there aren't, then, uh, I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. It's been a long night. Uh, Mr. Kendrick, if you'd give us the first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to add Article 8 entitled Downtown District to the Appendix A entitled Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Sea of Homewood to amend the zoning map of the Sea of Homewood to rezon the parcels of property listed in Exhibit B from the current zoning district to L1 Downtown Low Intensity District to rezon the parcels of property listed in Exhibit C from their current zoning district to M1 Downtown Medium Intensity District and to rezon the parcels of property listed in Exhibit D from their current zoning district to H, uh, Homewood Downtown High Intensity District, be ordained by the city council as follows. Section 1, that the downtown district, Article A, Section A, the purposes of the, of the district are defined. Section B, the general regulations of the district are defined. Section C, the downtown zoning map. It sets out the zoning map with the addition, which has just been made, and the previous addition that deleted the property north of 27th, 27th Avenue South. Section D defines low LI, downtown low industry district, sets out the table 1, the building and site standards. Section E defines the medium intensity downtown district. Table 2 defines the building and site standards for that district. Section X defines, Section F, excuse me, defines the high intensity district. Table 3 sets out the high intensity building site standards. Section G sets out the development criteria for the downtown district. Table 4 sets out the facade types that required by, in the downtown district. Section H, uh, defines the uses permitted within the downtown district. Table 6 sets out the restrictions per district that are applicable. Section I deals with parking requirements. Table 7 deals with the parking requirements. Table 8 deals with parking occupancy rate. Section 9 deals with all-street parking minimum dimensions. Table 10 deals with the required loading and service space. Section J deals with street, street, street scape requirements of the district. Table 11 deals with the street scape standards. Section K deals with the open space requirements of the district. Table 12 deals with the public open space requirements. Section L deals with administrative and process, uh, and procedures and processes. Table 13 deals with the approval authority. Section M deals with the definitions applicable to the district. Section 2, that the zoning map of the Sea of Homewood is amended, pursuant to this figure set out, in fact, uh, se-, figure 1 of Section C of this article. Section 2, the parcels identified in Exhibit B are rezoned from their current zoning classification to L1 LI, excuse me, Light Intensity District. Section 4, the parcels described in Exhibit C are hereby rezoned from their current zoning district to the following, medium intensity district. Section 5, that the parcels defined in Exhibit A are hereby taken from their current Homewood zoning district and rezoned to the, the Homewood Downtown Intens-, High Intensity District. Section 6, all of the provisions of Appendix A entitled zoning and the zoning map of the Sea of Homewood except us here above set out shall remain in full force and effect, not be affected by this amendment. Section 7, that August 23rd at 6 o'clock PM is the time and place fixed for public hearing, at which time all persons who are interested may appear and be heard. Section 8, that if any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional are invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all parts provisions, the ordinance are not thereby affected, shall remain in full force and effect. Section 9, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council and approval by the mayor or as otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. All right, anyone?
I would move for unanimous, uh, move for unanimous consent. Second.
All right, so we got a motion for unanimous consent from Ms. Smith, a second from Ms. Andrus. And if you would please do a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salt.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gears?
No.
All right.
Do, do, can we do it in the morning?
So. So. All right, so the unanimous consent fails, uh, so we will not be voting on it tonight. What I would, uh, propose that we do, um, because I, we are all going to be here next week and the, uh, we've got Labor Day the week after, uh, and, and I want to be respectful of everyone's time. That we will have a, uh, meeting of the full council next Monday at 5 o'clock. We'll push finance back. Uh, yes, sir. Oh, yeah, and, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kendrick will not be here because, because he's got to be out of town that day. But, uh, I think we need to go ahead and move forward, so, uh, we'll call it, do a, uh, alcohol meeting for this Monday at 5 o'clock where we will deal with this issue. All right, uh, and with that, this item is done for tonight. Thank you all for coming. All right, so next item on the agenda. And, and let me say this, anyone that wants to come back at 5 o'clock next Monday, you're welcome. All right, next item, 040821. Yeah, the public hearing is already closed. There will not be another public hearing. I did. Next item, 040821, public hearing set for August, for tonight, for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 873 Forest Drive, brought to us by Tom and Wayne Spire and Wyatt Pugh. If y'all, if y'all could just try to hold it down a little bit so we can get through these other items that we have tonight. We'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Um, yes, uh, the committee met last week, um, and heard from Ms. Spire and, um, the Spires are building a new home that is directly adjacent to the creek. And they are requesting a fence to go along the edge of the creek in order to, uh, protect the safety of their three young children. Uh, it is considered a front yard fence because it does project out past the front wall of the house as indicated, uh, by the yellow line on the screen. And, um, we had a motion to send this out without recommendation pending this public hearing tonight, made by Ms. Andrus, then seconded by Mr. Sims. And again, that was 5 to 0 coming out of committee without a recommendation.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I will open this public hearing. And I know the Spires are here. Um, uh, I don't, I think everyone probably understands what this is a- at this point. So I'll just ask if there's anyone else to speak for or against this item. If not, then I'll close the
Motion to approve.
Public hearing.
Second.
Against.
And we have a motion to approve from, uh, you did that, Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
And then, uh, I believe Mr. Alamon seconded. I will say this, just, uh, I, I don't want to hold this up anymore tonight, but I, I do think it's important that we make this distinction. And Ms. Smith already did it some. This, this is technically a front yard fence under the variance, but it's not enclosing anything in the front yard. So, and I think that's an important distinction as we look forward with front yard fences. This one's not trying to enclose anything. This is just along the creek. We've, we've traditionally approved ones along the creek, regularly as we, as, as time has gone on. So, uh, this is a little bit different of a front yard fence. So with that, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As 11 to 0 and is resolution 210, 21107. Thank you very much. All right, next item. Yes, thank you for your patience. Sorry that it hit on this night. Next item, 050821, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance to 2614 19th Street South. Wealth Management to permit two internally illuminated signs and one extra wall sign brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. And we'll have another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, um, the committee met last week, heard from Mr. Halls, who represents the sign company. Again, it is a variance to, um, for one additional wall sign and for both of those wall signs to be the one that's permitted and the one that's going to be, uh, asked for the variance to be internally illuminated, which is no longer allowed, um, in that particular area. And, uh, this was, uh, made a motion for Ms. Andrus to send it out without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. That motion was seconded by Ms. Gears and the vote was 5 to 0.
All right, so with that, I will open this public hearing. Uh, I believe Mr. Hoss is with us as well. He's, he's also been very patient. Uh, and just so we're clear, I think Ms. Smith just covered it, but, uh, we're talking about both number and illumination, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we got to deal with this internally lit situation and we passed the sign ordinance for a reason. And so I'm, I'm not going to look, I'm tired of looking at this every single week, so.
Yeah, we, I, I would agree. This, this, this sort of governing by variance is a problem.
Exactly.
So we either need to stop allowing them or we need to change the ordinance. So, um, so I, I agree, um, and, and obviously changing the ordinance is not before us tonight, but we can't keep going this way. We got to do one or the other. So, uh, you know, if, if we keep, if we keep approving variances, the only thing that makes sense is to change the ordinance.
And, and I will say, based on the number of signs that currently exist that are internally illuminated, uh, and the ones that we have allowed by variance. To me, the number of signs that currently already are there makes it more, and, and honestly, I will say this as a person who's looked at, there's much less light pollution with this than there is the two giant doosnet things hanging out over the side of the building. So I feel like if we're going to do it, we should change the ordinance to allow the internally, internally illuminated signs and just adjust the ordinance. That's my opinion. This may not be everybody's opinion.
I am seeing a lot of head nods.
Yes.
So, um, but not all, not all, but, but a number of head nods.
Yes, and that's not before us tonight, but that probably does need to be added to an agenda, um, going forward so that we can look at that. But in terms of tonight, um, Mr. Halls, I know you, you mentioned this to us. This is, um, basically on two corners of the building, correct? Like on one, one side facing, uh, Roseville and one side facing, yeah. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve the signs.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Ms. Nelms. This is for two additional sign and illumination.
Yes.
I'm assuming that your motion was for both, Mr. Alamon.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is 11 to 0 as well and is 21108. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Hoss. All right, next item, 010821, request to surplus miscellaneous IT equipment brought to us by James Yates. And we'll have a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, uh, the Finance Committee met on August 16th and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item, so this would be an ordinance tonight.
All right, uh, Mr. Kendrick, if you could give us a first reading, please.
It's an ordinance to declare certain properties surplus. Section 1 is hereby established and declared that the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, therefore declared surplus. Exhibit A describes the miscellaneous telephone equipment that's included. Section 2, the mayor and the city clerk being or authorized and directed to dispose of property by auction to the highest bidder.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Same age.
Second. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salt.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gears?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. All right, so that is 11 to 0. Uh, now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. Harden, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salt.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gears?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes, that's 11 to 0. That'll be ordinance 2812. All right, that brings us to the next item, 070821, request for consideration to amend fiscal year 2021 capital budget, capital fund, capital projects fund budget and accept lowest responsive bidder for library parking lot paving project brought to us by Debbie Fount and we will, our library director. And we will, uh, another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, on a, a funny note, uh, Ms. Fount was going to come to the meeting. I told her not to come tonight. So she might be on Zoom unless she's asleep, but, um, the, uh, the committee did vote 5 to 0 to recommend approval of accepting the bid from.
Yeah, I'm here.
I knew I would hear you. Okay. If you need some money, you're going to be awake. Okay, so the, uh, lowest responsible and responsive bidder, uh, would be, we're making a budget amendment of 79,64155, uh, so 5 to 0 coming out of Finance.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we have a motion from Finance. Go ahead and get the motion. Okay, any other questions or comments? Can you clarify, I don't have my paperwork from last Monday and which accounts that's coming from. Was this, it was all from budgeted stuff that you'd saved money on, correct? Are we coming from carryover fund balance? To fund this?
This, uh, this, we tried to get a transfer, uh, within the library, but there, there were, there was not sufficient funds, so it, it, can you answer that?
Yes, sir, um, the, the total budget amendment, there's two pieces to it. 79,000 that you just spoke of was for work that did not get.
No, just the fund, just the fund that we're moving it from.
We're moving from carryover fund balance.
Carryover fund balance.
Yes.
Correct. The library had an expense that was carried over from fiscal year 2020.
79,000.
79,621. That's right.
Yeah, they've been carrying over to, to handle the parking lot. Yeah.
So it's actually 79 plus 50.
That's right.
Okay. The amendment is 79.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. This is it. This went over a little bit. Yeah.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
79.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Not all in favor? Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be resolution 21109.
Who made the motion?
Thank you.
The motion came from the finance.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. All right.
She's already.
All right. Next item, oh, seven, oh, eight, 21, request for consideration of a downtown entertainment district brought by myself and counselors Andres and Waltony. And we'll start with a report from public safety, Mr. Waltony.
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to recommend the item for approval. The motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
All right. Thank you. This is an ordinance. So, Mr. Kendrick, if you can give us a first reading.
Yes, it's an ordinance to receive Homewood to add Article three entitled Entertainment District to Chapter three entitled alcoholic beverages of the Code. Of ordinances of the city of Homewood now therefore be ordained as follows. Chapter three, our alcoholic beverages, Article two, entertainment district. Section three dash 40 deals with the authority as provided by 233A171B of the Code of Alabama. Section three dash 41 deals with the definitions applicable to this ordinance. Section three dash 42 deals with rules and regulations. Subparagraph H deals with alcohol within an entertainment district. Section B deals with the hours of operations. For the entertainment district, section C deals with the sign requirements. Section D deals with special temporary events within a district. Section three dash 43 deals with penalties for the violation. Section dash three dash 44 deals with temporary closure of the district. Section three dash 45 deals with amendments to or elimination of, of any articles. And provides the no vested rights in the, in the entertainment district. Section three dash 46 deals with the downtown entertainment district and establishes the district as defined in exhibit A. Bounded by Independence Drive, Rosedale Drive, 18th Street, Central Avenue and Oxmoor Road is displayed in exhibit A. Section two repeals any ordinances in conflict with this. Section three deals with separability. Any part of provision declared to be unconstitutional, all the parts remain full force of effect. Section four, legal rights not impaired means nothing in the ordinance impairs or any present suits or proceedings pending against any persons or entities. Section five ordinance is cumulative. Section six, it requires a publication of the ordinance as seven as effective date, which be upon adoption and publication. Adoption, enrollment, publication of the ordinance. That's all. Section eight defines the boundaries of the district with a colored map.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kendrick. I know that when we've talked about this, there's been a little bit of discussion about the map. And the, the boundaries. Mr. Sims, I know you, you had had some concerns about the map. I don't, is this, are we looking at what you're, what you've been talking about? I don't know.
This was, the, the blue is the attached map or the, you know, the entire blue area is the map that's in the proposed ordinance. And, and I was just looking at basically the, the primary intent of this, thinking that it would be along 18th Street. And also along Reese connecting, you know, the grocery and other establishments into downtown. And then also recognizing those establishments that are further up. 29th Avenue. So, so just trying to think about the walkable corridor and going between places that would be. You know, primarily in consideration of an entertainment district. So I was just wanting to present that for discussion. Thinking that the entire district as proposed could essentially go from Nibels to, you know, underneath Red Mountain Expressway, which, which seems like a large boundary. And, and so maybe that needs to be the boundaries. I just wonder what the intent is then for, you know, having it that open.
So, and just to make sure, I'm looking at the map that Brian's got up. The, the yellow is what you're proposing to change it to? Am I understanding that right?
Yes, that's what I, you know, had sent the email and just to initiate a conversation. Yes. Thinking that, you know, that those corridors would be known because basically when people go between establishments, they're going to be on streets. So, you know, framing it along the right of way between, you know, Reese, 29th, 18th Street. And then essentially so Ho Square, that essentially is a connected area, but that seems like a viable entertainment district.
And, and if I'm looking at this map correctly, it's got the streets, but it doesn't have the, if, and I'm not sure I'm looking at it correctly. But it doesn't have the actual parcels that have the licensees on them.
That's correct. I think that's a good, I mean, that's good information and consideration of what to adopt that I don't, I haven't been able to see at this point. So I think it's good for discussion. We're the licensees, so we don't unfairly leave someone out who would make sense to include.
Just like the, the new.
Shiki.
Shiki. We've got Hero Donuts that has a license. We've got. Yeah, it's going to sell alcohol. Yeah.
Can I?
Yeah, Mr. Jones. I thought the, hang on, hang on.
I thought the intent was to, to make it as broad as possible so we can encourage, promote business. So if somebody wants, you know, has, has something coming up, they're not limited to just what we have on our footprint. That, that was what we had discussed, I thought, in committee, but there might be a different opinion. We, we just thought it was to make it as broad as possible. So that we don't miss anybody. As we're talking about four businesses now that are not within the, the yellow, I'm just saying, that's why we made it broad.
Sure. I would also add that while the, the parcels are also highlighted. And it may look like it's a large swath of land. People aren't going to be walking through the parcels. They'll be taking streets, sidewalks. And I don't think we want to inhibit any business owner that may be on the edge. While it may be lower volume, which is good because it borders your neighborhood. So I would be opposed to the yellow because I think it infringes upon other businesses that for no good reason would not be included in it. And additional businesses like Cheeky and whatever may open up in the area down as well beyond them. And I apologize if I got that wrong with the pronunciation, Cheeky.
I think that's right.
And, but you know, something may pop up further over toward 27th. I just don't want to get us in a position where we limit ourselves and, and pick, pick favorites over others. Or I'm sorry, pick winners and losers. That's where I was going with that.
Can we stay with the proposed map then? Is that a motion? Do we, we've had the first reading already? I'm so confused right now.
We had the first reading. The question is, do we want to amend the map? If no one.
I do not.
If there's not a desire to amend the map, then the motion would just be to approve.
I made to approve.
Second.
No, I moved for unanimous consent.
Second.
Sorry.
I knew that. Anderson, Waltony. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltony?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gear?
I'm going to vote no because I want to hear from businesses that this is something that they want. And I mean businesses who aren't liquor license based businesses. And I have not had an opportunity to talk to anybody on 18th Street about it. Or anywhere downtown.
Mr. President, point of order. There really wouldn't, I mean, by you voting no on unanimous consent, all that's doing is.
Delaying.
To the net, well, just to the next council meeting where we're voting on it, we're not, we wouldn't make any changes at that point. So if you, if you're against it, then you need to vote against it and then provide some type of substitute motion. But the motion before us, we've already had a first reading and then we'll have a second reading at our next meeting and then we'll vote on it. So. That, I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Well.
Sure.
Explain that to me then.
I think, so I, I think what Mr. Jones is saying, I think he just wants to make sure that you understand that by voting no. Doesn't change what we can, what we're considering the next time it comes up. In other words, we're considering the same thing we're considering tonight.
Absolutely. But I can get more information from myself between now and then.
Sure.
And will this, I'm out of town and unable to be here probably next week. Is this when this will be taken up? Is next week? With the, to the special call meeting or is that simply for, I mean?
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess, I guess we can do anything. But whichever one we want, if, if we want to consider both of them at that meeting and, and have to vote on both of them, then we can do that.
Yeah, I guess. Is it a special called meeting? You don't know yet for just the one item or the.
Right. Or whether it's going to be for both items. And so, you know, we can, we can go ahead and do it for both items since we're meeting. I don't have a problem. And since we're doing these limited votes, I don't have a problem with that. So we can put it on there for that unless, unless you would prefer me to wait to give you more time.
I just haven't heard from anybody in the community about it and I haven't had a chance to reach out to.
All right. Well, then.
I would prefer to wait till the next council meeting unless there's some undue reason to go ahead and handle it.
I, I think we got some people itching for it, but I don't, we can wait until the week after Labor Day. That's fine. We'll wait and do, do it then. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So next item, oh, two, oh, eight, 21, request to plant trees in the right of way at the corner of Venture and Lopredo. And we'll have a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval pending the indemnification agreement. Motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right. Thank you. So we've got a, a motion from Public Works. I will say that John Mann has contacted me a couple of times and given everything that's going on this week. I just haven't had a chance to get back to him about the sidewalk issue that came up. That's not a part of this anyway. There's nothing about the sidewalk that's before us tonight, but I did, I know that came up in committee, so I want everyone to know that I, I'm still working on it. John also happened to mention that he couldn't be here tonight because he's out of town. So that's why he's not here. But at any rate.
He, he said he wasn't going to be here last week.
Okay. And so, so at any rate, all we're dealing with tonight is the trees. We'll talk about the sidewalks at a later point. And I'm still working on that conversation with him. So tonight, all we're dealing with is the trees and we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor? Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and where are we? 109?
I got one to him.
110. Thank you. That'll be resolution 21110. All right. Next item, oh, three, oh, eight, 21, request to repeal and replace the flood damage ordinance brought to us by Kale Smith. Our city engineer and another report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to refer the full council without recommendation. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Gear.
Full of ordinances tonight. Mr. Kendrick, another first reading, please.
This is an ordinance to amend Article two entitled flood damage control of chapter five entitled buildings. Construction and related activities of the code of ordinances. Article one, that Article two entitled flood damage control is amended to read as follows. Flood damage prevention ordinance. Division one generally, section five dash 20 statutory authorization. Section five dash 21 is finding the facts. Section five dash 22 is a statement of the purpose of the ordinance. Section five dash 23 is the objectives. Division two general provision, section five dash 24 lands to which this ordinance applies. Section five dash 25 basis for area flood, special flood hazard. Section five dash 26 establishment of a flood development permit. Section five dash 27 compliance. Section five dash 28 fabrication and greater restrictions. Section five dash 29 interpretation. Section five dash 30 warning and disclaimer of liability. Section five dash 31 penalties for violation. Section five dash 32 is a saving clause. Section five dash 33 is a repealer. Division three administration. Section five dash 34 designation of flood plan administrator. Section five dash 35 permit procedures. Section five dash 36 duties and responsibilities of the administrator. Division four provisions for flood hazardous reduction. Section five dash 37 general standards. Section five dash 38 specific standards. Section five dash 39 floodways. Section five dash 40 building standards for streams without established base flood elevation. Proximate eight zones. Section five dash 41 standards for areas of shallow flooding AO zones. Section five dash 42 standard for subdivisions. Section five dash 43 critical facilities. Division five variance provisions. Section five dash 44 designation of variance and appeal for. Section five dash 45 duties of the board. Section five dash 46 variance procedures. Section five dash 47 variance for historical structure. Section five dash 48 conditions for variance. Section five dash 49 variance notification and records. Division six definitions. Article two. That all provision of chapter five entitled building construction and related activities of the code of ordinances of the city of Homewood remain in full force and effect, not affected by this amendment. Article three of any part of provision or is declared to be unconstitutional and are invalid by court of competent jurisdiction, all provisions remaining full force and effect. Article four, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the city council, approval by the mayor's otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions or comments? Not, then entertain a motion and second for unanimous consent.
Same move.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Mr. Wolverton and roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltony?
Yes.
Counselor Gear?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
See.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. Now I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval. Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Andres, another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltony? Counselor Gear?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Absolutely.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones? Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
It's 2813, I believe.
Oh, that's probably right. All right. So that was 11 to zero as well and is ordinance number 2813. Did I say that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Next item, 130221, request for consideration of changes to the landscaping and tree requirements brought to us by counselors Waltony and Andres. A report from planning and development, Ms. Andres.
Yes, the committee met last week and voted five to zero to refer to the planning commission with added language regarding displaying tree permits on site. Motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Waltony.
All right. Thank you very much. So we are referring this to planning commission. Do we need to vote on that, Mr. Kendrick?
Unless there's an objection.
So if there's no objection, then we will, and we will send this to planning and development. I'm sorry, to the planning commission. All right. Without objection. All right. Next item, oh, four, oh, seven, 21, request to consider annexation into the city of Homewood from unincorporated Jefferson County for 1629 Sunset Tribe. Brought to us by Abdullah Azim and Melody Salter and Robert Brigitte. And another report from planning and development, Ms. Andres.
The committee voted five to zero last Monday to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Gear and seconded by Counselor Waltony. That can't be right. Gear and Waltony aren't voted on my, that's not right. Who, Ms. Salter? I do not have the, who the motion was made by. That's not correct.
Oh.
Seconded by Waltony though.
On the minutes. I'll, I'll have to pull them up and look at it, but.
Okay.
We'll make sure it makes it.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure that the, I'll make sure that the minutes are corrected and we'll go back.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry if I missed that.
Is the applicant not here?
It doesn't look like it.
I kid.
All right. Another first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir. In order to sending to the annexation of certain property or territory to the corporate limits of the city of Homewood. So as to alter and rearrange and extend the corporate limits of the city of Homewood, whereas all owners of certain property or territory. Here and described did sign and file a writ petition with city clerk requesting that property described here be annexed with the corporate limits. Whereas petition filed the clerk did include a legal description of the property and a territory. Whereas petition filed the clerk did include a legal description of the property and a territory together with a map showing its relationship to corporate limits in the city. Whereas the property or territory described in the position referred to above has been warranted by the owners of the property to be contiguous to the corporate limits of the city and does lie within the corp, does not lie within the corporate limits of any other municipality. Whereas the city council has determined and found that this matter set forth and led to the petition here and above are true and that is in the public interest that the property be annexed to the city of Homewood. Whereas the petitioner did request their petition that the city of Homewood adopted an ordinance ascending to the annex of the corporate limits of the city. Now therefore be ordained by the city council as follows. City council does hereby send to the annexation of such property or territory to the city of Homewood. Section two, the pursuant to the provisions of eleven forty-two twenty of the code of Alabama, the following described property. This is sixteen twenty-nine Sunset Drive, Sunset Drives, excuse me, describing exhibit A as annexed into the corporate limits. Section three, above described properties not within the corporate limits of police jurisdiction of any other municipality. Section four, that the city does agree to comply with the provisions of act six oh four of the nineteen seventy-six reckless session of the legislature, section five, city clerk shall file a certified copy of the ordinance with a judge appropriate. Section six, a copy of the ordinance shall be forwarded to tax assessor. Section seven, there is exclude from the territory annex pursuant to this ordinance. Any portion of territory described above that may be found to be the property of another person, firm or corporation other than the petitioners and which might be found a line and area more than one half the distance between the old corporate limits of the city of Homewood and the new corporate limits of the city of Homewood. X and A, a copy of the ordinance shall be published as provided by law.
Councilor Andrews, I pulled up the agenda for us. I have Sims and Gault.
Okay, that's great. Yes, no.
I have Sims and Gaultney motion to send out without recommendation pending public hearing. Sims and Gault.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, that is not what's here, but I'm sorry I missed that. Okay.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, so any questions or comments from the first group? If not, entertain a motion and second for your name. Harden and Alamon. All right, roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Gaultney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gear?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes, yes.
Councilor Sims, okay. Councilor Jones? Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andrews?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
No, no, that's just unanimous consent. Now entertain a motion and a second for approval. So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Harden and I believe Mr. Gaultney, he got it in just under the wire. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, Councilor Gaultney?
Yes.
Councilor Gear?
Yes.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton? Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones? Smith, Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andrews?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. There you go. All right, that actually brings us to the end of the old business agenda. Moving now. We got the, which brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and second for approval of the committee referral agenda. Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Any opposed? That's eleven to zero and is approved, which brings us to other new business. Sixteen oh eight twenty-one, request to set a public hearing for consideration of assigned variance at one West Lake Shore Drive. Brought to us by Ascension slash St. Vincent's, Kelly Higgins Certified Lighting. We will set that public hearing for September thirteenth at six P M. Next item, seventeen oh eight twenty-one, request to consider the mayor's twenty-two twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Ahead of myself, twenty-one, twenty-two budget for all funds.
Well, I was gonna, I was, I was gonna do a really bad joke about my thirty minute presentation that Brian needs to load for me and, and I just, I can't, they're all fuzzy right now. That's just, that's not, yeah, that's, that's cruel and unusual, so.
Makes you feel any better?
Almost answered here.
But you're actually not, so. No, I just, I think I've talked to most of you and I did talk to my department heads as well today. Because I knew that the public hearings tonight was going to take as long as it did. I'm not going to do the high level presentation that would normally be done at this time, but per fiscal policy, I do have the budget ready for you. Your gifts are right over there. You can get them on your way out. But next week at the finance committee meeting, I will do my high level budget and then we will discuss the, the actual budget hearings. But I would be remiss if I didn't, first of all, thank my department heads. They worked very, very hard with me. We set meetings over the past month and a half. Sometimes multiple meetings to try and get this done, to be able to go through their needs, their wants, everything else. And, and we were able to, to do that very well. I want to say thank you to the finance and city clerks department, Bo, Kelly, Amy, Lavanda and Stephanie for their work on the budget as well. But a special thank you to Melanie, Kami, Melody and Robert. If you guys had any idea the amount of time that they spend putting this together, you would, you would be amazed. You really, really would. It is, it is late nights, early mornings, weekends. They were up here all this weekend, this entire weekend. They were here getting this put together. And I know we, we had a little extra to put on them with the bond call this, this year, which was, you know, it was, it was needed, but it, you know, wasn't, wasn't the best timing. But I just want you guys to understand how hard they work to put this together. I, you know, my meetings with the department heads don't take up near as much time as them putting the books together. So just want to say thank you and again, grab your books on your way out. We'll talk about it next week.
So is that a yes? How about President Wyatt?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Do I get to? All right, so those will be, the, the mayor's budget will be referred to finance to set budget hearing dates. And we'll let Mr. Jones talk about that in just a minute. All right, next item, eighteen oh eight twenty-one, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of August ten twenty twenty-one through August twenty-three twenty twenty-one, brought to us by Robert Brigitte, Melody Salter, Ms. Jones.
I'll defer to Mr. Gault.
Yes, I had the luxury of coming through the many bills that we get the luxury of paying and I saw nothing that caused concern, so I'd make a motion for approval.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gaultney, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is eleven to zero and is twenty-one one eleven. Okay, this item is not on here, but I would, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add this. Y'all don't even know what the item is.
Ready to go home.
So I believe Mr. Gaultney moved to amend the agenda to add items nineteen oh eight twenty-one, which is asking, just get it out there. To, to request that the mayor sign an agreement with the post office for the Eighteenth Street Improvement Project. For five hundred dollars. And thank you, Mr. Kendrick, for performing miracles. So this is a vote to add it to the agenda. It was Mr. Gaultney and Mr. Wolverton, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's eleven to zero to add that to the agenda now.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Smith and Mr. Wolverton, all in favor? Any opposed? Eleven to zero and I could not be more excited about that.
Yes.
That was other new business we added that to. All right. Which brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, what else you want to talk about?
It's just a, just a few things and these are, these are on serious notes. For those of you guys who do not know, we just had a former police officer and current dispatcher from the Homewood Police Department pass away from COVID two days ago. And it's, his name is Ken Lockamy. We, we just certainly need to pray for his family at this time. As, as we know the arrangements, we will make sure that we pass those along to everybody as well. Also pray for James Yates, who was actually in the hospital with COVID and not, not doing well. So we need to, yeah, need to be, need to be praying for he, he and his family. And then Robert actually had to attend to a family issue also related tonight. So let's just keep everybody in our prayers, listen to the things, the things that we do tonight. And, you know, we can hear people yell at us and scream at us and we can scream back if we want to, but it's, that's, that's not what matters. Let's, let's be, be mindful of, of what we're all going through and keep everybody in your, in your thoughts and prayers. So, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gault. I'll be brief, but three things. Park Ridge between Manhattan and Sutherland is cut and will be excavated. So if you're driving that area, one lane will be open, so expect some delays going forward, probably tomorrow, Wednesday, depending when the tile arrives. Mayor, thank you for the budget. I was looking for something to do this week, so. In addition, thank you for the schedule, Council Jones. I do appreciate that. That helps plan being here. And then lastly, I, I just have to ask, because I saw this new elbow brace in someone's elbow, was that from dropping the DDT on everybody's budgets? And that came in after stuff?
Yes, from too much road peeing and too much typing, sorry.
It's like, I wanna.
No.
But thank you for all that y'all do to help us get a good budget, because I know a lot of y'all, this will be your first time going through it and there's a lot of the legwork done for us. A lot of, a lot of good stuff in there.
Do you need to set public safety?
My apologies.
I think you just want to do eight thirty for the fifth.
Yeah, so we're having council at five o'clock.
Yeah, so we're having council at five fifteen. Yeah, council at five, finance at five fifteen.
There's no, no new items. Need thirty minutes? Actually, I'm not going to set public works.
Good.
I'm sorry, public safety.
All right. Rather than double up because of Labor Day, we're going to have this on the fifth. Committee's on the fifth. Yeah, on the fifth Monday, on the thirtieth. All right, Ms. Gear?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alamon?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm, to the library board meeting and, you know, just want to say that Debbie Powell is a great steward of our city funds and she does a great job of making sure that she only uses what she needs. And I learned that she would sometimes return to the ten percent of her budget if she hasn't used it. So she is a fantastic steward of our funds and they are in great shape. I also just want to say that the news of the dispatchery is just really tragic, right? And I think that we need to do everything we can as a city to protect all of our city employees. And lastly, I want to thank everyone on council for the respect that they demonstrate to one another, even while we're having very difficult discussions. And I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you very much. Mr. Wolverton?
How long do you need?
Thirty minutes. Or five forty-five.
Okay. We're going to do Public Works at five forty-five.
How long you need? You got three new items. I can't remember what you got on there.
Two of them are the same person. Twenty minutes. All right. Yeah, it's, it's been a long night. I'm not going to belabor, belabor the point or anything else. I, I agree with the sentiments that it is tragic to see first responders, pregnant women, young and old people dying right now. Trista's grandfather and grandmother passed away last week as well from COVID on Thursday and Saturday respectively. And I, I just want to say that, you know, there is an FDA approved vaccine. It is highly effective. If you believe in ivermectin or whatever else you believe in, it's also, you know, a product of Big Pharma and it doesn't, you know, it, that argument doesn't hold weight for me. But point being, I, I would encourage you to talk to medical professionals and if, if you are willing to go seek modern medicine, if you end up in that predicament, then I would highly encourage you to just go ahead and get the vaccine and be done with it. It helps significantly and there's plenty of research that shows that, so. That will be it.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Thanks so much. I just want to start off by echoing prior remarks from counselors and appreciation for, you know, agreeing to disagree and being respectful and, and I'm really thankful to all of y'all as, as co-counselors and, and appreciate y'all as well. I also just wanted to mention really quick that in this version of Homewood Life, which is in all of our inboxes, maybe some of you already took it home. But also my friend who passed away earlier this year, L J Rouse, the Homewood Athletic Foundation has set up a scholarship for him where you can donate specifically to that and it goes towards providing, you know, scholarships to student athletes in the name of the L J Rouse Foundation. And so if you feel so inclined to give, I highly encourage you and thank you all. Love you. Good night.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee will meet at five fifteen, as we've mentioned. The, I have sent out a proposed budget hearing date, so they're going to be September seventh, ninth, fourteenth, sixteenth, twenty-first, twenty-third. We need to pass the budget on September twenty-seventh. Thank you for the mayor for putting, getting it all, everybody together to put the budget together. It's going to be, it's going to be great. Look, look forward to it and that's all I have. Oh, congratulations on our football team. I did get very upset reading the Tuscaloosa News on the front page of the sports page. They called it the five star performance of Hillcrest quarterback. Even though he lost, they should have called it a five star Homewood. And they, and they made a reference to an ugly kick. Well, it was good and so I'm happy for him.
Still counts.
So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'm going to set special issues for six oh five and I think I can do it in fifteen minutes. Oh, you're not even setting? Okay, well then there you go. I might take forty, I might take, I might take an hour. I don't know. We'll just see. I'll see how long it takes me to do.
Let's see some internally lit lights sign.
We'll dive into the whole sign ordinance situation on Monday. No, I'm good. And Melody and Robert, thank you for all of your hard work on the budget. I know how difficult it is and especially when we throw nine other things at you at the same time. So, so our appreciation is great and that is it for me.
All right, Ms. Nels?
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Same.
Wow. I'm sorry, I called on Ms. Andrews. That can't be right. Yeah. Wait, wait a second. I'm sorry. Jennifer, did I catch you? I just want to make sure.
I am not setting P and D and I'm not keeping you here past, it is now ten o'clock, so I'm out.
Y'all cannot believe what happened to me last week. I have nothing more to say, but thank you for all your work. All right. All right, I'm not going to say a lot other than to say thank you to everyone. Thank you to all the residents and everything that showed up tonight. Thank you for all of you and all of the work that you have put in on time and effort and work that you put on, in on this. And thank you for your respectful nature of everyone and how we communicate with each other. I agree with everything that's been said. That's very important and very much appreciated. So, and, and, you know, quite frankly, not always easy, but I think this group does it well, so I appreciate that.
Don't forget the man in the moon.
Yeah. I, I, I appreciate that. But.
And Brian.
And Brian. Thank you, Brian. You, you had the hardest job of all tonight and it went completely seamlessly, so we appreciate that. And thank you to the mayor and all of everyone else that's worked on the budget. I look forward to going through it sometime other than tonight. And with that, we are adjourned and we'll see everyone next week.
And take your trash with you.